Okay, so the next one, Jonathan stepping down, let the record show. So that means the two regular members and the three associates will be voting on the next.
All right, let's sign some paperwork here. Second line, got it.
And Jonathan, I think you're only gonna be in the room for a couple of minutes. Just to let you know.
Yeah, this is not good. The sticky notes covering. We'll get it all set. Today is the-
Twelve.
Twelve.
Thank you.
You are welcome.
Do not sign on the top line, please. Sign where, anywhere else?
Anywhere, go right below my signature would be great. Just don't sign the top line. I get, I catch hell for that every time.
What's the date?
Twelve. All right, so the next one will be two regular members and three associates. Charlie, would you read Twenty-Eight Wilson's Grove into the record, please?
Twenty-Eight Wilson's Grove, owners Hayworth C Neld II and Kathleen A Neld, trustees of the Neld Family Trust, request a special permit under 174-17.1 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace an existing single-family residential structure with a new single-family structure on property located in the R3 and Papanissett Overlay Zoning Districts, map 118, parcel 80, Mashpee, Mass., continued from 9/10/25 at the request of the attorney. And I have a letter from Attorney Christopher Corain dated November 3, 2025, to Ron Bondi, Chairman, Chairperson. Dear Chairman Bondi, as you know, we represent the owners of the property referenced above. It is hereby requested that the hearing scheduled for Wednesday, November 12, 2025, be contained until Wednesday, January 14, 2026, as the Nelds' hearing before the Conservation Commission was continued to December 11, 2025. Thank you for your attention, very truly yours, Chris Corain.
Anything to add to that, Counselor?
No, unfortunately, the Conservation Commission is the day after your next scheduled zoning, so we can't do that one, so we're asking for January.
Gotcha, so your letter is incorrect for the extension time?
No, it's correct. Because I asked for January.
Okay, I see. I get you.
Is that okay, Marion?
All right, can I have a motion in reference to that letter, please?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
That's actually a good way to do it, Marion. That way, no one signs on his, his line. Thank you. It's usually you. Oh, it's me.
I know, it's usually.
Yeah, I know.
I'd like to blame Jonathan, because he's not here.
That is correct. Let's blame him. Mike needs to sign it.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
Thanks. Sorry. No, actually, I don't.
Is that your first one, Mike?
No, not the first one.
Second?
Yeah.
There you go. We're gonna keep counting.
We're not counting.
Looking forward to your third and fourth.
Eight hundred and thirty-seven.
Yeah, I know. Thank you, Marion.
Probably more than that, yes.
All right, so the next one, Jonathan's not sitting, so that means two regular members and three associates will be on Fifteen Childs. Charlie, would you please read Fifteen Childs? Childs.
Under continued hearings, Fifteen Childs Road, owners Julie Silva and Martin J Riley, trustees of the Silva-Riley 2021 Realty Trust, is appealing the Building Commissioner's determination under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40A, 8 and 15. Applicants are aggrieved by the Building Commissioner's determination of the site obstruction of fencing under the provisions of 174-31.1 does not apply. Said section only applies to street intersections and corner lots. Fifteen Childs Road is neither located on a corner lot nor is it at a street intersection in the R3 zoning district, map 114, parcel 93, Mashpee, Mass., continued from 10/8/25 due to lack of a quarrel.
So Counselor, I presume you're up to the plate on this one?
I am. Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing Martin Riley and Julie Silva. At the last hearing, there was some brief discussion about why we were here before this board. And the reason we're here is based on an email from Commissioner Morris dated July 18 of 2025. It says, "Hello, Martin, I've been to the job site and noticed that the vinyl fence in between the two driveways has created a site obstruction. A fence of two and a half feet in height is allowed, which the fencing exceeds. To remedy this, you must lower the fencing 20 feet from the property line. Consider this communication a notice of violation and remedy the problem within 30 days. If you feel aggrieved by my decision, you may appeal to the ZBA." So again, everything within that letter suggests, you know, a violation and an appeal, as you would any building commissioner's decisions. So that's why we brought the appeal, why we came before you at the last meeting, why we're here from you tonight. And, you know, I think, you know, from my perspective, while there's no actual citation to a zoning bylaw, it says site obstruction, it says two and a half feet, 20 feet, those are all found in your site obstruction bylaw, which is 174-31.1. So again, that's why I cited that bylaw in the appeal, just because, again, it kind of has all the hallmarks of the language that's in that bylaw provision. There's nothing else in the bylaw that talks about fencing or site obstructions in your zoning bylaws. It's 174-31.1. And if you read 174-31.1, it says, "To promote public safety at all street intersections, corner lots, in all districts, no sign except signs erected by the Town of Mashpee, fence, wall, hedge, or other visual obstruction shall be maintained, installed, or erected at a height of more than two and a, two and a half, one and a half feet above the plane of the established grades of the street, within a triangular area on a corner lot formed by the street layout lines 20 feet distance from their point of intersection. Or in the case of a rounded corner, the point of intersection of such lines is projected." So this lot is just in the middle of a street. It's not, not at an intersection, it's not at a corner lot, it's not a rounded lot. So I, you know, I think it's pretty black and white. You read the definition, you read the bylaw, "street intersection, triangular area on a corner lot, feet distance from their point of intersection." And again, this is, none of that applies to this lot. It's not a corner lot. It's not at an intersection. So I just don't see that this bylaw provision applies to this particular situation. You know, if there's a problem between neighbors, it's a civil matter, not a zoning matter. And that's how I would believe.
Gotcha. Seems to me, David?
Yeah, again, yeah, I, I can agree with his last sentence. It probably is more of a civil matter than a zoning matter, because I never cited the exact law, but it does have the hallmarks. I basically started this letter because the, there's a lot of, this is bigger than just this one neighborhood. And the town officials have had conversations with me about this, and I conceded that I can write a letter about backing out of the driveways. You can't see anything until you get out of the, out to the street. I can write a letter that would, that would, I can write a letter saying that that's a concern. I, I, the intent of the letter was to spark a conversation with the two owners. The other, the other-
Have we done that? Did it do that?
Never had a conversation. We just had straight to appeal, and this is the first conversation we've had. So I did this just to try to get the ball rolling, to say, it's a neighborly thing. I sent the boards a letter about my concerns, and I showed them pictures of one end of the fence. If you remember, they own both, two houses, so one end of this fence, it's a continuous fence around both properties. One end of this fence comes down, it has a nice curved, six-foot, curves down to like three feet, and then it has two sections of rail. You can see the person's driveway. It's, it's, it's not an imposition on the, on the neighbors. And you go to its other side, it's six feet, and then it's just, it's like cut, like an amateur put it in. It does not look nice. I, you've all seen the pictures, and you can see the difference. That's what my point is. Basically, that was my point, that basically, this is a neighborly thing, and I was trying to get these, these people here to be neighborly and, you know, respect the other people's, people driving out of the driveway, so they can see what, what, they can see the road before they get there. But they chose not to, they chose not to be neighborly. They chose to fight this. And again, what Chris said, this being a civil matter, it is more of a civil matter. I wrote in this letter that I wrote to you, "I will be happy to hear the thoughts from the board, but I will reserve my right to withdraw my letter if, if I feel it's appropriate to do so."
Well, why don't we take it around the block here a little bit before?
Okay.
Is that okay?
Um, just, I wanna add a few, a few other points, but-
Yep.
Before you do, I do wanna hear from the board, and I want the board to speak about it, but, uh, that's about it, I guess.
Okay. All right, well, board members, you have any questions?
We have one more.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna go to letters next, but-
Okay, yep.
All right, any questions, board, and then we'll go to letters. All right, so could you read letters into the record, please, Charlie?
Yeah, we have one, uh, letter from, and a butter that was not entered into the record at the last meeting, and that's a letter dated, uh, October 7, 2025, from Maurice and Mary Cassinelli, directed to the Town of Mashpee Zoning Board of Appeals. Members of the zoning board, we are the owners of the property at 11 Childs Road, and we are writing to you regarding the fence issue at 15 Childs Road. We have the following concerns. One, the height and placement of the fence obstructs the visibility for drivers exiting my driveway. This makes the fence a safety hazard. Number two, the design of the fence is inconsistent with the aesthetics of the neighborhood. Once you enter Childs Road, it stands out in a way that detracts from the appearance of the area. Number three, the fence does not appear to serve a purpose. It's positioned between the two driveways, and it neither provides privacy nor security. Number four, the height and proximity to the road seems unnecessary. We understand that Building Commissioner David Morris informed them that the fence must be lowered, and they have appealed his decision. We believe that his decision was morally fair and proper, and believe it should be upheld. Please consider the above concerns when hearing this appeal. Sincerely, Maurice and Mary Cassinelli.
Any other letters, Marion? That's it? All right, what I'm gonna do then, Mr. Riley? So is there any way you can straighten this out, you think, with the butter? Can you work together with the butter?
Gotta come to the mic.
Yeah, come on now, I'm sorry, I apologize. Come up to the, to kind of the mic, we can just have a conversation, please. If you could just state your name and-
Martin Riley, owner of 15 Childs Road. The fence was put in when we moved into 17 Childs Road for a period of time. So sitting in the kitchen at 17 Childs, you look across 15 Childs to the front porch of 11 Childs. It's a short-term rental, so we're sitting in our kitchen, and all you see is people on the deck. So that's why the fence was put up, to provide that privacy to 17 Childs. It's been there for three years. It's consistent, the rest of the fencing around that property is, was already there. We didn't put it in, it's not our fencing. The only piece we put in is the piece that is, that we're discussing right now. So the stuff in the back and the other side is not owned by us, so.
Well, it seemed to me, there's gotta be a way to figure this out, right?
So we have year-round tenants that sit in the kitchen of 17 Childs, so it provides them privacy. We did install several trees as part of the rebuilding of 15 Childs.
And the trees don't give you the, the required privacy?
They just went in. We're expecting that they may, but I don't know that they will.
But 17 Childs does not abut, was it? Fourteen, it doesn't, it's not an abutting, so why, why is it so concerning to give them privacy?
They're both tenants of ours. We own both properties.
I know the board wants to try to bridge the gap here, but, I mean, ultimately, I don't know how much time we want us, you know, trying to-
Well, I think we should spend a couple of minutes on this. If we can work it out, that makes total sense. If we can keep it all neighborly, if, if, if that doesn't work out, then we're gonna go a different, different route, and we'll, we'll, you know, listen more from the zoning enforcement officer and see what, what avenue we're gonna take. And, but at this point, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to work something out with the neighborhood here a little bit.
My mic is concerned.
It seems like there's been no communication.
No, well-
And when I hear that there's no communication, that tells me maybe there's a possibility, if there were communication, you could work it out. That's all I'm saying.
There was adversarial, it was an adversarial permitting process for 15 Childs Road, which didn't start itself on one foot.
So there's no, no, there's no give and take?
It doesn't seem to be.
You've got your position, they've got theirs.
The other thing is, it never came up at the, at the special permit hearing, it was never an issue, right? The, the issues that were brought up, we all, we addressed. They asked for the stairs to be moved, we moved the stairs. They asked for it to be lowered, we lowered the property, right? We tried to be accommodating. The fence never was raised an issue. It's been there for three years.
Okay. So the fence, so there's no cooperation because it was an adversarial permitting process? I'm the bad guy?
No, I think he's talking about the neighbors, not you.
All right.
We are looking to revisit it once those trees come in.
I did, I did look up many, many state laws. They're kind of vague, just like all of them. I do hate bringing a fence up or a tree to this board, because it never is going to go well. People are gonna dig their feet in and say that they have every right. But I did read a part of what's called a spite fence. This, I think an argument can be made that this is a spite fence. And, you know, to, to fix that, just bring it down and make it so, you know, it looks nice like the other end, but it's not gonna happen. So I'm gonna tell this board that this is a civil matter, and I'm gonna withdraw my, my complaint.
There you go.
And I think, I think the case should be brought to a court of law as a spite fence.
So you're, you're gonna withdraw your, your decision?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna withdraw it.
Okay. What I'd like to is go to the audience to see a lady raising her hand. Do you wanna, do you wanna say something? You're raising your hand, then I wanna listen from the audience. If you just give your name and address, please.
I'm Julie Silva, I-
Julie, that's a big one.
I think I'm gonna go back and sit down under the counsel, my attorney, but I do have pictures.
Now, we're okay with that.
Where'd that, we've cut them.
The zoning enforcement officer's made a decision here. I just wanna hear people in the audience, I have to, but at this point, the zoning enforcement officer's gonna withdraw, so. Anybody else in the audience like to speak? Okay, seeing none. So you're wanting to withdraw your denial, then, I guess? Or your request to remove the fence?
Notice of violation.
Yeah, notice of violation.
It was considered a notice. It wasn't even, it was, it was a suggestion of a violation.
Well, it said, "Consider this communication a notice of violation."
So Counselor, he wants to, he's gonna withdraw his violation.
But it doesn't say it's a notice.
Would you please withdraw your request for an appeal?
Yes, if the board-
Subject to him re-
Correct.
Exactly, we got, so can I-
It was a promise to, to-
Yeah. So can I get a motion that states the following? Subject to zoning enforcement officer withdrawing is a notice of violation, the applicant will withdraw its appeal.
Okay. Proposed motion relative to Charles Road is subsequent to the, the officer withdrawing his finding, the owners have withdrawn their appeal.
Right, I think you gotta vote to accept the building commissioner's withdrawal.
So we're gonna accept the zoning enforcement officer's withdrawal?
Yep.
That, that, and the applicant's appeal is also withdrawn, subject to zoning enforcement officers dropping the, the-
The violation.
The violation, right?
You did that very well.
Okay, so can I get a second of that motion?
Back.
All's in favor?
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. We need to get Jonathan back.
Okay.
All right.
That was, that was-
Second line.
That would just start in the new line.
Don't sign on the top line.
Don't sign on the top.
He's dirty.
Don't sign on the top.
What's wrong? You'll go. Oh, sorry. Here we go. Where did, where did Counselor go?
Went out the door.
Oh. There you go.
Went out the door with the applicant.
All right. New hearings. Sitting right now will be, you wanna wait to have him sign that? Counselor, you need to sign that document. So it'll be the three full-time members, and why don't we go with Charlie and Michael? And then we'll rotate, and then we go Michael, George, or something, I don't know. So Charlie, would you read into the record nine mutiny?
I will. New hearings. Nine Mutiny Way, owner Scott D Wolf, requests a written finding under 174-17 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a 24-foot by 28-foot hatch garage to a pre-existing, non-conforming structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 90, parcel 27, Mashpee, Mass.
One second, so we're just gonna- Okay. There you go. So again, sitting in this is Charlie and Michael.
Oops, there's another one.
Go ahead, sir.
Hi, I'm Scott Wolf, nine mutiny way. I made the changes that you requested on the last time I was here. Talking about the drywall and the calculations for the runoff for those as well. And just overall, just trying to get everything that you're looking for on the plan. Showed the trees on the side, which I, you've asked for a curb cut, with a curb cut, private road, so I don't need one. I went down, talked to him, I think I asked him to set a letter ahead. So I think I've showed the distance from the septic system, the back corner of the garage. Showed the distance from the flood zone, elevation 10, to the corner of the garage. I included the trees on the side, which I've talked with the, with, I think his name, Tobin? Is it Tobin? On the committee for the trees. I talked to him about-
Oh, Brad, Brad, yeah.
Right, right, yeah. So I talked to him about that, and I've come up that I, I don't really have room for the trees, so I'm gonna, I got a proposal, write him a check for it. And I think pretty much everything you guys were looking for.
Well, not to cut you sure, remember the last time we were looking at a stamp from a, an engineer?
I did, I provided-
Yeah, no, I agree. I think you've done everything requested by this board.
Yeah.
I've reviewed it, I think I'm happy with the application at this point in time.
Yep.
It's only gonna make the site better, what he's doing, and so at this point, what I'm gonna do is just go through my checklist here, and let's move this forward. So any more, any additional letters from anyone?
No, we have conservation, board of health.
Yep. Well, why don't we, did we read, well, let's read them if they're...
Okay. Conservation, uh, nine mutiny way, existing dwelling, not within wetland jurisdiction. Board of health. For nine mutiny way. Board of health, house to remain, three-bedroom, room above garage is for storage only and not a sleeping room.
I, I also went down, talked with him at the board of health and asked him if he could adjust the wording because down the road, when we have sewer, that I would like to go forward then and reapply for an ADU.
Well, I understand, just to let you know, it isn't, sometimes when you're on sewer, doesn't mean you can add another bedroom, believe it or not.
Oh, really?
Oh, no question. Sometimes it can be as hard, if not harder, than if you're on a septic system.
Right.
Because it's out of your controls and the sewer department's control. So I'm not, I'm saying that that's a possibility that you can't add a bedroom.
Well, I guess, everything hinges on it, one, everything else, right?
Yeah.
So if, if I were not to be allowed to put a bedroom or an ADU in there later, then I would have to look at, it's, it's useless to build that space up there. So that, at that point, I would just cut the second floor off and just put a roof on it.
Well, for us though, I think for this application, we need to go with, you know, the board of health's, you know, letter. What I recommend is follows. This doesn't negate you from coming back to this board or going to the zoning enforcement officer somewhere down the road saying, I want to do an ADU.
Yeah.
And I understand that the, that the ZBA said no to that space, you'd have to come back to this board. But nothing precludes you from doing that.
Right.
And I, somehow we have to get off the square we're on, which is to get you going, right? And that's the only way I can do that is...
But I also have to have an understanding, is it possible in the future? Because other than that, it's just a waste of money and time.
Well, there's no way that we, in my opinion, that we can say, oh, no problem, you're all set, if you come back, we'll approve an ADU. And I don't even know if the, the zoning enforcement officer is going to have you come back here. So I, you'd have to, I mean, you'd have to ask him that question. But I can only tell you that if the board of health has stated that you, that space has to be non-habitable space, that's how we have to condition it.
Right, while it's tied into septic and all. And then at that time, I would file and see, I guess I'll look at my possibilities to the future of whether that's even...
We have to deal with the cards that have been dealt.
No, I understand, I understand.
I mean, you've done what you've, what I've, what this board asked of you.
Yes.
But we have to go with other boards and that, and the board of health agent said, this is it and we're not board of health.
Okay, fair enough. I'm just, I guess I'll have some...
And the other thing, the other thing you should understand is if we condition it on that and we approve it, doesn't mean you have to build it. You can, you can back off if you decide, I'm not going to waste my money because I'm not sure I'm going to be able to get a bedroom up there someday.
Right, well, I guess...
But you'll have an approval for, for non-habitable space.
For me, as possibilities, I have the space. So then that requires me to flip in and just enlarge the bedrooms on the other side of the, the wall there. So then...
We, we, we can't help you with that one.
I'm still a three-bedroom. I'm trying to change, start from renovating the house.
I got you.
I want to renovate, go into a full renovation.
I mean, our, our hands are tied, though.
No, the motion that will be proposing...
Yeah, we don't know what's going to happen down the road.
Will just indicate, as one of the conditions, that it'll remain a three-bedroom.
Yes.
And the room above the garage is for storage only and not a sleeping room. Because that'll be part of the condition.
Yes. He'll be making the motion if in fact we get that part.
Well, could we take out, you know, because if I go, come back in and I say, okay, bedrooms are off the, off the thing. But then I want to encroach into that from the existing house and expand the existing two bedrooms into that space. And then use it as a...
Only thing we can do is, we have a letter from the board of health that says, that space that you've come to this board for has to remain non-habitable.
Yeah.
There's nothing we can, as a board, there's nothing we can do.
We don't know what's going to happen down the road.
We can't trump, we can't trump the board of health.
No, I'm just, I, I, my biggest concern with wording is if that's permanent and that's it.
Well, no, 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 no.
You can always come back and change it.
Oh, okay, I, I...
You're right, Ron, there is a possibility that you might not be able to put, there's a possibility. But this, the new Affordable Housing Act with an ADU, it's completely geared to make it more permissible.
Right.
So the, the chances of, I think, the chances of not being able to, to put an ADU above at a later date after you get the surge in is, is minimal. I, I don't think, I think...
Yeah, I, I think that makes sense. But, but as a board, we can't say, don't worry about it, right? We, we can't do that.
Yeah, we can't say that.
We can only say what the board of health said.
I don't think we should make a big, big issue over it right now. We crossed that bridge, you want to come?
Yeah.
Exactly.
The board of health does say it specifies while it's connected to septic.
Correct. But I can tell you, when it goes to sewer, there are some criteria still that haven't even been, I don't think, ironed out. So there's no guarantee if he goes to sewer that he can, that he can add a bedroom either. I just want him to be aware of that. Yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah, so the bottom line is, in order for us to move forward, we are, we've been notified by board of health that it can't be habitable space. And so we're going to make, if the motion's made, it's going to refer to that letter. So there's nothing we can do. Unless you want to extend, go back to the board of health and have him retract that letter. You could do that. But we cannot, we cannot vote today with what's on record from the board of health, without including the board of health. Now, you can ask for an extension, like I said, go back to the board of health and say, hey, can you retract this? Can you withdraw this statement to them?
I'm not sure they're going to do that.
They may not. That's not our, that's not our hunt.
I think, I think the wording is, that's, I guess, what the wording is because...
Exactly.
It's not saying, you know, that it's so, like, puts you down a funnel.
No, we're, we're going to mirror the wording.
Trying to stay out of that.
Charlie, mirror, mirror the wording in the board of health document. We're going to use the same wording if we were to make a motion that's concluded in the board of health document. So it's going to be the same wording.
Right.
So at that point in time, you do what you have to do. You come back or whatever the board, whatever the zoning enforcement officer wants you to do for an ADU, if you choose to go that route, between you and him.
Okay.
You may have to come back to this board, I don't know.
Right, okay, fair enough.
All right. So that being said, I've got to go now. So board questions?
Nope.
None.
Okay. David?
I would just like to add that I, I love the project. I think, I'm very happy with how it came out and I, I thank you for not caving in on it or bailing out on it because it's a good project.
And, and I concur. I think you're going to make the neighborhood, you're going to make the, the water issue better. I think it's a great project. I think it's a very good project. So, audience, anyone in the audience having to say about this application? Okay. All right, go back to the board, anything?
No more.
All right.
No.
So, um, let's close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Um, all right, so would you like to make a motion, Charlie?
Uh, the other thing, I just want to commend you. Everything that we talked about the last time you were here, you went ahead, got it done, got it done right. So that makes everything easier for everybody. So we thank you for that.
Just trying to comply and make it...
All right.
This is a motion relative to nine mutiny way. Owner Scott D. Wolf requests a written finding under 17417 and 17433 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a 24-foot by 28-foot attached garage to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 90 parcel 27, Mashpee, Mass. With the following conditions. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass General Laws 40A Section 6. Number two, plot plan nine mutiny way prepared by canal and surveying and permitting Inc., date May 30, 2025, scale one inch equals 20 feet, stamped and signed by Richard Hood, professional land surveyor, number 35031. Three, a letter dated November 4, 2025, submitted by McKinnis Consulting, Inc., stamped and signed by Sean McKinnis, P E license number 41328. Four, building plans, garage addition, nine mutiny way, A14, left front and rear elevations, A34 foundation plan, A34 first floor, second floor and basement floor framing, prepared by Graven Architectural Design, date 4/13/25. Condition on all town, number five, condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the board of health and conservation department comments, with the board of health department comments reading, house to remain, three-bedroom, room above garage is for storage only, not a sleeping room. Number six, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number seven, condition that the applicant seek and obtain, planning department review in reference to the tree bylaw, chapter 175 of the town bylaws prior to the application of a building permit. And number eight, the board finds under 17417 and 17433 that the proposed project as submitted is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure or used to either the town or the neighborhood.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Again, if you want to do an ADU, just see that gentleman over there, he'll give you guidance.
Very good, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Ronald?
Yes, sir.
John Hancock on that?
Yep.
That's good. Sign there. Sign trash?
Yes.
I don't know if you need these back.
Is there? Are you one, two, three, four? So 10 trees on this one?
Okay.
More stuff.
All good?
Yep, junk.
Trash.
Nope, trash.
Hey, we're organized.
Signed.
You're good?
All right. So sitting in the next one will be three regular members and let's see, so we just did Charlie and Mike, right? So we're probably going to do George and Mike?
Got you.
There you go, George and Mike. Charlie, would you read it into the record, 89 Industrial Drive, please?
Okay, 89 Industrial Drive. Petitioner Stephen P. Hines requests a modification to the existing special permits SP-2022-52 under 17425 G6 and G9 of the zoning bylaws to allow for boat storage of up to 20 boats inside contractor bays and outside. Item 11 of special permit only allows one boat to be stored on property located in an I1 zoning district, map 88, parcel 27 Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record 11, Industrial Drive LLC.
Okay, so if you could state your involvement, your name?
I'm the owner of the piece of, the A1 Industrial. Mrs. Frank Strank, he wants to store boats. Frank Skelly, my company's chairman of Boat Works. I currently run out at New Seaberry Marina. I do the service and the storage there. In outer room. Store a few boats at this place. I would generally do what I do all the service at New Seaberry Marina and then bring them over there covered in dead storm there. Don't do any work on them.
Okay, so are you, you all set? Any letters need to be read into the record, Charlie? George, if you'd like to read it?
Sure. This is, uh, preference 89 Industrial Drive, dated November 11, 1920, 2025. Mashpee Building Department. I, John Fish, 13 Nancy Lane, requesting an amendment to the board of appeals for an eight-foot soundproof acoustic fence, not a six-foot fence. Door should be closed when work is being done in the bays to diminish noise and any chemical odor. Extremely bright blinding lights on the building that are shining in our yard need to be corrected immediately. These lights have been a stressful, have been a stressful and uncomfortable environment to live in. Respectfully, John Fish.
Any other letters?
No, just the board and conservation.
Did we get any? Oh, so we do have a letter from conservation?
We do, yeah.
Why don't we read that into the record?
Uh, board of health, relative to 89 Industrial Drive. Board of health, no comment.
Okay.
Conservation, 89 Industrial Drive, not within wetland jurisdiction. So the only things to look at.
Is that the extent of letters, Marion? So we have nothing from fire department?
Nope.
Really?
I called a couple of times and left a message. They never got back to me.
Yeah, so we're going to go to board questions at this point, so... I'm concerned, I'm not, I'm not against the application. It's just, I would have wished that fire department, you know, chimed in because taking 20 boats and putting them inside, as we all know, fiberglass is like flammable?
Most of them would be outside, they're not going to be in the building. The building's sprinkled, too.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm not against it. I'm just saying that fire department, you would think this would be their specialty because, you know, you probably know better than I do. I mean, fiberglass is like a petroleum product and oh my God, it loves to burn. It's the easiest thing in the world to light on fire and so...
Like a Christmas tree.
Oh, yeah. So I, you know, so you would think that the fire department would have...
Did this go in front of, uh...
Design review, I mean, site plan review or anything?
Site plan review.
No?
They're just modifying.
It's a modification.
Yeah.
Why don't we, what's that? Wait till you...
I'm not against the application.
Where all the boats are?
Questions? How many can really go in?
Yeah, so it seems to be in reading it...
Design and plan review.
Allow for boats to have a 20 boats inside contractor base. So you're asking for 20 boats to go inside the contractor?
For outside. For outside. They wrote that wrong.
So all of them are going to be outside?
Yes.
Are there no boats going inside at all, zero?
My own boat and some boats will be in there, but nothing...
Well, does your own boat go in there today?
It's not in there yet.
Well, what I'm saying, has it been going in there?
Yes.
Do they have a, so here's a question of you, David. Can he store his boat inside that area today?
I would say, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's a, it's a private garage.
Okay.
I would say the dump trucks and the equipment would be worse.
No, actually, believe me, dump trucks and equipment wouldn't be worse. Boat fires are quite common. And when they go, you know, they take city blocks, as you know.
Well, you guys just approved on, on 28 there where the big anchor is, what's that, 978. Two acres got cleared in the back over there and there, there's piling boats in there.
Inside the building?
In the back of the property.
Yeah, yeah.
Outside.
Outside.
I'm, I'm, if you're willing to say to this board that you're not looking, I've got a document that says there's 20 boats going inside your building.
There's not.
My point is this, if you're saying you have your boat in there, this is your private building right now, I don't, and our zoning enforcement officer said he can't control that, so we're fine with that. Now, the point of it is, though, is if this board were to see that, see it this way, these 20 boats can't go in the storage unless you put specifically the fact that you're going to put boats inside that storage. Other than your own personal boat, I get that. But other people's boats shouldn't go inside. Because my opinion is, we need to have the fire department look at this very closely.
The question, the question I have is, you're going to put 20 boats outside? How about if there's a fire and the fire department has to come in here? Where are they going to be parked? Is there going to be a lane? How wide is the lane?
That's the whole reason why this needs to go in front of design review, so that the fire department can comment.
Yeah, it's, not that I'm against it.
We don't know what they think.
But there's no information on here.
I, I just, when you're talking...
And no feedback from the fire department.
We, we need feedback from the fire department and that's the only...
Plus, I'd like to see where they're going to be on here.
Plan?
Absolutely. Where are the parking spaces, where they're going to be?
Water department is?
I'm sorry?
Is that the plan there of it?
Yes.
Of the water department, there's a fence up there and that's where they, it's all going to be on the pavement.
Oh, I'm familiar with the property.
Yeah. You should put on that, here's recommendation. Put on that paper where you plan, put boat storage enough to fit the 20 boats. Make sure your length and width is adequate.
For our area where we would like to...
And we have to make a note in the plan that there's no boats going to be stored other than your private boat. I get it. I, it, zoning enforcement officer says you have a right to do that. At that point in time, I think the fire department may look upon this differently than we're looking upon it now, which is 20 boats going inside a building. But you still have to put on that plan where you're going to put them.
Yep.
Okay?
We'll do that.
But if you're gonna, and you gotta, you need to understand, it's gonna be conditioned if in fact this board approves it, which I'm not against it, so I'm okay with it, but it's gonna say that the only boat that's gonna be stored in there is gonna be your own private boat.
Let me suggest that you would...
I wouldn't go for that either because what if, you know, I, I, I'm always buying and selling boats, so who, you know, I don't know what I'm gonna have in the building. Are you gonna, somebody gonna come and look in and see what's in the building?
Well, I mean, the town is, is not probably gonna do that, although they probably could. I mean, all I can say to you is, we need to protect the town and the town needs to say the following, in my opinion, no boat storage other than your private vessel, right? And at that point, if the building burns down because you had five boats in it and, you know, not us, because we said, don't do that. So are, am I gonna go down there? No, maybe he will, I don't know, I can't, I'm not his boss, so I have no idea what David does on a, you know, on his daily, you know, he may drive down there, it's up to him. But I can tell you, I have no plans of knocking on your door to see if you have boats in there or not. But I, I can tell you also, unless the Fire Chief is aware that you wanna put 20 boats in there and he gives his approval of 20 boats in there, I will, there's only gonna be one boat in there and that's yours.
I gotta go see them next and see what happens.
There you go, and then put on this plan...
We need to hear from them, make sure...
You know, have it drawn on that plan where the...
So they can look at it and say, I like it, it's wide enough, they're gonna wanna see how wide the lane is, in case there was a fire.
Oh, there's plenty of room.
What they want.
Backed up, there'd be 50, 50...
As long as you put it on the plan.
All right, I'll...
The Fire Department might say, hey, it's sprinkled, no problem, put 20 boats inside.
You're right, you don't know.
I'm not the Fire Department, but, you know, I, I just think it's important that he chimes in.
All right.
Yep.
And I, and I think we've, we've not circumvented him, but he hasn't had the chance to chime in, so. All right, so would you like to extend it? Well, do I need to go, anyone in the audience like to speak in this application?
It's just coming back again.
It is gonna come back, but we're gonna extend this.
We're gonna do this all over again.
But it may make sense.
It's gonna go all over again.
I appreciate your honesty, audience.
So, hold on, we gotta get you on the mic.
Why don't you come on?
Name and address.
Yes, name and address, speak into the mic, please. I think it's important just in case there's more issues, right?
So my name is Frank Gormley at 9 Nancy Lane, which is an abutting neighbor property to this property in 89 Industrial Way. So I'm here with the other members of our community because we had our annual meeting last week and the subject, amongst other things, that took the longest amount of time was trying to figure out how we could resolve a better relationship with Mr. Hines because he hasn't seemed to cooperate in the past with our complaints that we brought to the town about the noise, the excessive noise. And when it was brought to, and lighting, and this goes for all the properties that are on the north end, all the cul-de-sacs have the same complaint, that is why we're here. That in addition to the fact that we looked at the permit and it says that it went from, you know, one boat, he wants to go up to 20, we're trying to imagine, if it's bad for us now, how will it be if it's up to this maximum limit? Why would the, what's special about him and this situation that caused for giving him a special permit? And then I'm particularly concerned, I'm grateful, I'm grateful that you gave attention to and thought through the consequences of leaping excessively in this number to that amount of boats, if there was one little problem that could greatly grossly get hugely out of hand, and we're the neighbors to it. So we have to communicate that. I, we hadn't even thought that, now we're gonna think even more and more deeply about those kind of consequences with this kind of huge leaping growth. Because I already wonder if, he says one boat, I don't think there's just one boat there now. I know, we know this property very well. So his ability to be faithful has not turned out...
Well, as Jonathan said, we're gonna, we're gonna extend this and you'll have time to speak again.
I'm very concerned and I can call it to the attention of the press, that, I mean, any, any kind of consequences to the town is hugely relevant to us, is we're, we're the ones who catch on fire.
We understand. So this will be extended, please come back again if you choose to and speak at that time. Great.
But I appreciate it, but, but I, and I'm a little concerned where the conversations start with, we don't have any objections, well, you haven't even heard these conversations and you already came to the feeling that you didn't have any, all right, that's an assumption of judgment perhaps I'm making, but, you know, I don't see how that helps...
I don't think that has anything to bear...
...helps the conversation. Me is, I resonate with you that you're gonna have openness to hear us.
Oh, I'm certainly, I'm, we're listening to you right now.
That's why you're speaking.
I'm just saying, all right.
We will listen to you at the next meeting and the meeting after that, just, just don't duplicate your statements, that's all we ask. There's no reason to say things two and three times, and not that you have, I'm just saying, we listen to people all the time.
We won't do that, we won't, no, I'm not gonna take out a blind, blind review and say, tonight we use your time more.
Exactly. So I entice you to come back at the next meeting and speak your piece. Thank you for your input. All right, so that being said, anyone else in your audience have anything to say in reference to this application?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, yep. If you would just do me a favor, speak into the mic, give your name, address, and please don't duplicate anything in reference to the gentleman prior to your statement. I understand that, you don't look like him.
Why, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good evening, folks. My name is John L. Fish. I live at 13 Nancy Lane Mashpee. Mr. Hines and I have had a rocky relationship ever since he bought the property at 89 Industrial Park. A lot of, a lot of situations have gone on, you know, with Mr. Hines, but also other, other individuals that have been on that property, you know, running diesel trucks for 20, 30 minutes and, you know, you pop your head over and they're whipping birds at you and, and calling your names and stuff and then they come and threaten you. So that's what I've had to put up with in front of my grandchildren. So, one of the things, Mr. Hines and I kind of buried the hatchet pretty much in, about a month ago. And we talked and I showed him a, a veil from B&amp;B Construction on the three-foot berm and also at 20 feet, that was the understanding that was going to be put up with trees and also an eight-foot fence. Now, I had gotten open heart surgery and I told Christopher, my lawyer, to shut down the lawsuit. And when he shut down the lawsuit, I told him, the only things that I want was that berm and that eight-foot fence, the lawsuit for the property and everything else, we drop it. Okay, let that go. All right, just settle it and let it go, just put it all behind us. Well, that didn't happen. Now Christopher was just coming here in front of the board just to settle it, but he really wasn't on the payroll. But he did me that favor and did that. So I come to find out that that was not what really happened. That became a six-foot regular picket fence and no berm. And instead of the 20-foot buffer that you folks originally, the board, said that they wanted that buffer to be, went down to 19 without that step and berm, okay? So what had happened was, I found out about that, I was pretty upset, but I was trying to, I was trying to save my life because I had open heart surgery. So that's, it took me quite a while to get over that. So anyways, that's why I'm asking for that to be changed because now I had found out that he's going for this permit, okay? After us meeting with him and his associates and stuff and trying to bury the hatchet, he turns, turns around and I showed him this and he didn't say too much about it, but he also didn't tell me that he was planning on putting another 20 boats in the property.
Well, not to country's shore, but just your honest, no, 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 wait. Just so you understand, it's gonna be extended, so you'll have a time to speak.
Yes, sir, but I, please, I would like to explain this.
Certainly, but you, but you need to get, you need to speak...
You can't have a $2 million building, two, maybe $3 million building with five bays on one side, five bays on the other and not wanna put boats in there. What are you gonna do?
That's not, that's not our decision.
I know that's not your decision, but, you know...
He comes to this board, he's asking for a modification of the special permit, we've, we're hearing him, this boy's brought up some issues with his application, he needs to do some more homework, we will rehear it, we'll hear it again, whether it be next month or the month after at a future meeting, and that's where we're at right now. We've not made any decisions, we've not approved or denied, and at this point in time, if you have a civil matter with him, you need to take that up with him, whether he didn't, wasn't honest, or whatever, that's between you and him.
Well, if you consider a civil matter, I, I...
Well, it's not, whether, whether it was truthful or not truthful, this board will not make that decision.
Well, again, again...
This board's gonna make a decision based on his request and whether we, whether we're gonna allow it or not allow it, and that's a modification of the existing permit.
Right, but, I mean, he can't, he can't come to the board and turn around and say, hey, he wants to put up a, he's gonna put up a six-foot fence. A six-foot fence is not going to close up the noise in the privacy...
He has not asked in reference to any fences, it's not on the application.
Not part of this petition.
There was one far that was a six-foot fence on, on this, with this settlement.
Yeah, that's not what we're listening to tonight.
That's nothing to do with us, sir.
That's not tonight.
That, now listen, nothing to do with us, he's asking tonight to amend his special permit to allow, per this document, 20 boats to be stored inside. We heard from him, he doesn't wanna store them inside. That's it. Fence issues have nothing to do with this board as far as this application.
Well, well, as far as that application, if that does happen, that's what's gonna have to happen for the, to keep the noise down.
Well, that's, you, you need to speak.
That's another subject.
At the next meeting, you need to make that statement and this board will make that decision.
The other thing is too, what about the lighting there?
I, that was read into the record, per your letter, this board will make a decision during that modification whether we approve it or not and whether we condition the approval or not. This board could condition the approval and dealing with those aspects or those issues. I don't know, I'm only one member. Do you have anything else you need to say?
Yes, put a lot of stress on my, my family.
Understood.
That, that, those lights being there are really bad.
Well, I would, I would entice you to come to the next meeting.
My whole backyard is, my whole backyard is all covered in lights.
Understood.
Like it is out here.
Gotcha.
Do you think that's right?
I'm not saying it is or isn't. I can only say to you, you'll hear, this board asked for an extension at that point, you'll hear the next meeting that he will be attending in reference to this aspect and I would, I would, I would recommend you attend and speak your piece. Thank you very much. So anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, okay. So again, to the board, what we...
I, I have a comment question, however you wanna put it. Looking closely at, at the motion, okay? What it looks for is to allow for boat storage of up to 20 boats inside contractor bays and outside. And then parentheses, item 11 of special permit only allows one boat to be stored on property located in an I-1 zoning district. My reading of that is, if this is approved, it allows 20 boats to be stored inside.
I concur.
Okay.
And that's why when I saw that, first thing I said is, do we have input from Fire Department? First thing I think about is storing anything that's fiberglass inside a building is fire.
But the owner, I, I, listening to the proposed owner, his intention is to store 20 boats outside.
Well, I, I, it seems to me...
It's gotta be on the record.
That the owner has to make a decision, meet with Mary Ann or whatever, and may have to amend his application.
How many inside, how many outside?
I mean, if I were the owner, I'd go meet with the Fire Department and he might say, hey, you're gonna have to rebuild this whole, well, I don't know, but the point is, he's gonna gain some more intel and knowledge.
Your thoughts are the same then?
Yeah, exactly the same. This application says 20 boats being stored inside, period. That's what it said. All right, so, anyone else on the board have any questions? All right. One to the audience, David, do you have any more input?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with the board that a fire lane should be established and all around the building. I think it's a good thing to make that happen. We have a couple of things, we gotta deal with, Mr. Fish wrote the letter that he's requesting a sound, an eight-foot fence as opposed to a six-foot fence, which was agreed upon. He, I would say that he would have to put in an application to Mary Ann to make that, but I don't think he can because he's not the owner. So we gotta deal with that, I think that has to be dealt with. And then there is a six-foot fence ready to be installed, I know that, I've been there, but...
What's that noise?
But it's, it's installed on Mr. Fish's property, he won't allow that to happen. So that might have to come back to the board, that might have to be resolved this part at, at a different hearing, but...
It is, because that wasn't part of this petition.
Um, the other thing is, I don't believe it triggers a, a plan review.
You don't what?
No addition, I don't, I don't believe it...
Yeah, and I'm okay with that, I don't...
...triggers a, a plan review.
I'm not saying we need plan review.
But if they come in and show this in the Fire Department...
I think we do need Fire Department.
It is, it is to a fire lane, I think a fire lane should be...
Well, not just that, I think that the Fire Department has to understand that this application today is 20 boats stored inside.
It's stored, I, I, I don't believe the intention is any of them inside except...
Well, we have to go with this paper.
Wait, 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 this application clearly states that 20 boats...
Inside and outside, yeah, I get it.
And so if it's gonna say that and this board's, board's gonna vote on that, it's 20 boats inside.
This was the application, right?
Yeah.
What's it say?
Storage of boats inside and out, approximately 15 to 20 boats.
Right.
So this application clearly states that if this board were to approve this application, you could put 20 boats inside the building.
So you got a new application?
But my point is, there's a lot more information this board needs.
Yeah.
Because the fence is part of the, part of the agreement, the special permit.
Yeah.
That was granted, it's on the special permit.
All right, so that being said, when's the next meeting that this could be?
January.
January, what's the, the date of the meeting? January 14th. Sir, could you come up to the mic, please? So January 14th is our next meeting, I think it would be wise to ask for an extension to that, you could ask for this board to vote on it?
I'll let her an extension, I'll go see the Fire Department.
Exactly, and I, and I would sit down with David too and, and work out as many things you can work out, because it seems to me you've got some issues. Well, listen, that's, you know, we're not the Fire Department, so...
You gotta talk to them a little bit.
I know.
All right, so that would be January 12th, did you say? January 14th. So you're asking for an extension until January 14th, sir? You're gonna need to sign a document before you leave, please? Can this board, can someone make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye, aye, okay.
Before you leave, you could sign that document, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who sat on that one?
Me and Mike.
You and Mike, all right. So then with the next rotation will probably be Charlie and George, and then we go George, right? Does that make sense?
I agree with that very well.
So Charlie and George.
Wait a minute, how many has each person?
Ah, you know what, if I made a mistake...
Stroke count?
Yell at me later.
Oh, good on you, no problem.
Why did I sit on one? He sat on three.
Like the three little monkeys sitting together.
I didn't say that.
I see no speaker.
I didn't say that.
Moving the cups around on the table.
Exactly. Thank you.
Hey, we're ready?
Yeah.
As soon as I get the document back.
Good job.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
Oh, no, that's...
Here we go. All right, so sitting in the next will be, what would you say, Mike and George?
Eric.
And Charlie, could you read Two Bayview Road into the record, please?
I would be happy to. On the new business, Two Bayview Road. Owners Peter and Rachel Van Wright request a special permit under 17417.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace an existing single-family residential structure and replace it with a new single-family residential structure on property located in an R3 zoning district. MAP 119, parcel 31, Mashpee, Mass.
Okay, counselor.
Good evening again, Mr. Chair members of the board. Attorney Christopher Corain representing the Van Wrights. They are the owners of property at Two Bayview Road. As the hearing notice alludes, this is a raise and replace of a single-family residence with a new single-family residence under 17417.1, your raise and replace bylaw. There's no wetlands that are within fifty feet, and there's no flood zone. So, this is a totally upland lot without any concerns about flood zone. A small part of the, the property was within the hundred and fifty feet for conservation, so they did require conservation filing, but it was approved by conservation. But there's no structure that's going within jurisdiction. So, this property's located on Secant Island. That is located in your R3 zoning district, which has a minimum lot size requirement of forty thousand square feet, minimum frontage of a hundred and fifty feet, forty-foot front yard setback. Although, in this particular case, the average of the two adjacent properties is seventeen point nine. So, in this particular case, the pro, the front yard setbacks could be as close as seventeen point nine as allowed by your bylaw. Because you can take the closer of two adjacent properties and average amount. So, seventeen point nine would technically be your front yard setback based on the adjacent properties. The rear and side yard are fifteen feet. And because this lot is only seven thousand six hundred and fifty-four square feet, under your bylaw, lots that are under ten thousand square feet have a maximum allowable lot coverage of twenty-five percent as opposed to the, what's generally allowed in the, the R3 zoning district, which is twenty percent. But again, your bylaw allows lots under ten thousand square feet to be twenty-five percent max. The only nonconformity on this lot is the size. So, at seven thousand six hundred and fifty-four square feet, that is a, a nonconforming lot. The front yard setback is conforming based on the average of the two adjoining properties. The side and rear yard setbacks are compliant. And at fourteen point four percent, the current lot coverage is compliant. So, what we are proposing is a building, new building compliant home. A IA system will be installed as part of this project. Our lot coverage will be going from fourteen point four percent to twenty-three point five percent. But again, at twenty-three point five, that is less than the max allowed under, for a lot under ten thousand square feet. There is a, again, a small portion of this lot was within conservation jurisdiction. So, there is some mitigation as part of the project. We're not creating any new nonconformities. We're not intensifying, um, there aren't no other nonconformities, so there's no even intensification. And I would say that this is consistent with redevelopment in the neighborhood. The, um, we have two front yards. So, Bayview Road is one front yard setback. And it's currently twenty-one point four. It's gonna stay at twenty-one point four, so there's no change there. Our front yard setback on Secant Island is currently twenty-seven point four. We are getting a little closer to the road at twenty-five point eight. But again, where your averages are seventeen, we're well within what's allowed based on the, the bylaw of the averages. So, again, we are gonna be building code compliant. We're not creating any new nonconformities. It's a residential, requires two parking spaces. And again, with the, you know, it being building code, getting the IA system, you know, we're outside of really any conservation jurisdiction. I think it's consistent. So, under your bylaw seventy-four, 17417.1, we're not creating any new nonconformities. That's element number one. We have sufficient parking for a residential, which requires two. And we're not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And again, as I've said a couple times now, the IA system, the building code compliance, we're not creating any new nonconformities. We're not in, you know, there's no nonconformities to intensify. So, overall, I think this is a project, and being consistent with the neighborhood, it's a project that this board can approve. And it's consistent with other approvals this board has given.
Uh, question. I thought you said the setback from Secant Island Road was twenty-seven?
The, the current front yard, I should say, the current distance between the existing house and the front yard, and the road is twenty-seven. The setback based on the averages of the two, of forty-two Secant and eleven Slipper Shell is seventeen. So, technically, we'd be allowed to go up to seventeen point nine. That's as close as we could get to the road, based on the averages.
So, you're saying you're not creating any new nonconformities?
No.
Based on the theory of the average setback on both sides?
Right. And even, even at the, even at the front yard setback is proposed is, is twenty-five feet. So, we're not even getting close to what could be allowed under the bylaw.
All right, let's go. Let's, so, let's read some documents in the record.
Question. So, you're basing the average setback on a house on one street and a house on another street?
Well, it's the adjacent houses. There are ones here and ones here. They're the two adjacent houses. They may be on two streets, but that's the way your bylaw reads. It's the adjacent, the adjacent houses. Doesn't say that...
Doesn't have to be on the same street.
No, not according to the bylaw. It just says, I can read it.
That's the first I've ever heard of that.
Yeah, I'd like to stay on it.
While he's looking at that, Charlie, could you look to make sure there's any documents or anything?
The only thing that we have...
David, what do you think on that?
Conservation and Board of Health.
I, I agree that the, the average is...
Can we do this in the right order, please? Because we're, I usually go to David in the bit.
Okay, let's, let me do the, I'll do the Board of Health.
All right, so let's recap here. One second. So, we heard the applicant. So that the board can all, you know, listen to the record. Read of the record, please. Anything that's been submitted to the board, please.
Board of Health, of Two Bayview Road. New septic for four-bedroom. Floor plans show four-bedroom. Conservation for Two Bayview Road. Resource areas buffer zone to coastal bank. NOI application was approved with the unanimous vote from the commission. Due to IA septic install and mitigation plantings are an improvement to resource area buffer zone present. Condition of submission of a one-year mitigation monitoring contract with a certified professional.
Any other letters?
Nothing.
None? All right, board questions?
Well, it's the same question.
So, if you look at footnote six under your zoning table, it says, "A dwelling need not be setback more than the average of the setbacks of dwellings on the lots adjacent to either side," which is exactly what we've done.
But you're looking at a setback on one street and a setback on another.
Well, that, that's not what it says. It doesn't say that. It says lots adjacent to either side. And that's what we've done. Whether or not it's on the same street or not is irrelevant. There, it's adjacent to it.
But correct me if I'm wrong, you're not infringing on it anyway. You're at twenty, so right existing is twenty-seven point four, right?
Correct.
And what's the closest you're gonna be?
Twenty-five point eight.
Yeah, so you're two feet in, you've just improved it, two feet.
No, 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 no.
They didn't improve it.
No, it's a front yard setback from the street.
So, for, for Bayview Road...
Yeah.
It's currently twenty-seven point four. It's gonna go to twenty-five point eight.
Okay.
So, it's getting a little bit closer.
I see. And your argument is, is I get what Jonathan's saying, is that because the, on either side, and one of them on the left side isn't on the same street?
To me, that doesn't make a lot of sense.
Did you go, so here's the question then is, have you looked at the house to the right and the house after that? For their setbacks?
No, that's what I'm saying. It's just the adjacent, these...
Well, I understand, but let's just, let's just take this theory, though. I get you, but let's just say that it is correct, that the setback is, so it's, it's moved. Who cares? My point is, is the house to the right, on the same, on Bayview.
To the left. There is no house to the right of the road. I'm sorry. Yeah, so Bayview is the house to the right.
Yes.
It's eleven Slipper Shell.
Okay.
But there's also a house on the other side of Bayview that's on Secant Island Road. Is that correct?
Yeah, but it's not, it is, but that's not the adjacent lot. The adjacent lot is the one...
But let's just, let's just say that it was. Let's just say that it was. What's the setback on that house, you know?
I don't know. They didn't do that calculation. That's not the way you...
No, I get it, I get it.
It's not adjacent, no. When we, I'll give you a perfect example. When courts look at merged lots, which you know much well, when there's a road that intersects them, they're not, they're not considered adjacent. They're not merged. So, we wouldn't do that in this particular case. A road...
Listen, we have a comment from a, from a member of this board.
And I guess I would...
I haven't seen it. Twenty-one years, I have not seen this.
I mean, it probably is a little bit unusual. But I, I guess I would say this as well.
You're looking for a setback from this particular road, but you're using a setback on a different road.
Well, using a setback on a house on, but the setbacks are all forty feet.
They're on adjacent...
They're, they're adjacent lots. It says adjacent lots.
It's an adjacent...
I know the way it's written.
You might not like the way it's written, but that's the way it's written. And we can try and interpret it any way we want, but that's the way it is.
I guess I would put it this way, too. So, for, for the setback that's on Bayview, it's not getting any closer. Twenty-one point four is twenty-one and fifty point four. So, it's not an issue. On this side, we are getting a little bit closer by, uh...
Two feet.
By about two feet.
Yeah.
You know, is the board considering that substantially more detrimental? I mean, that would ultimately be the, the alternative argument, but...
Well, we don't wanna create any, no, we don't wanna create any new nonconformities.
But we're not.
Because of the raise and replaces, you know. So, if you were, if Jonathan was correct, you're creating a new nonconformity.
No, we're not. Because the setback is forty feet in this zoning district, not twenty-five.
Yeah.
So, it's already nonconforming at twenty-seven.
So, you, you would be expanding a nonconformity.
Make it worse by about two feet, but you're not creating a new one.
That's, I concur. But you are cre, you are creating a scenario where it's, a setback would be getting worse if your theory of both sides doesn't, hold on.
Except your zoning enforcement officer, who you routinely ask for interpretations.
You know, I see that point. Do you, would that be all right? You ask the zoning enforcement officer his opinion?
Yeah, we already did.
Okay, good.
He agreed.
We agree. He agree with the way we...
Yeah, I, I think it's an nitpicking.
Well, there's another, there's another aspect...
I don't think that's the intent of a bylaw.
But the bylaw was written. We can't really decide whether that was a good bylaw or not.
Don't argue now, boys. Be, be, it's okay.
There's another aspect. It's under ten thousand square feet.
I don't think that was the intent of the way it was written. I don't think they...
Did the setbacks change, the lot coverage?
Lot coverage only.
All right, so, so, all right. Zoning enforcement officer, correct me if I'm wrong, you're saying that the way he calculated right and left, both sides, is the right way to do it?
I agree with him.
Well, he's a zoning enforcement officer. Are you all right with that?
No.
You wanna move forward?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I wanna say.
I'd agree with it.
All right, well, all right. So, that being said, any other comments from this board?
Unbelievable.
No, no.
Any other comments from the board?
Bill, I, I don't say that stuff about you.
All right, guys, it's all right. You're gonna drive home together. You could be walking. I'll give you a ride.
Thank you.
All right.
It's a long walk, Billy.
Board questions. Letter from a barter is David, please.
What's that?
It's, you're up to the plate.
Um, I don't, I don't have many issues with this.
You're okay with that?
The, the lot coverage, it's under ten thousand square feet, so the lot coverage is twenty-five percent. I don't really have an issue with it.
Okay. Anyone in the audience? Seeing none. Anyone, I'm gonna go back to the board one more time.
Nope.
Okay. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Go move.
I have a second.
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion in reference to the application, please?
You may. A motion relative to Two Bayview Road. Owners Peter and Rachel Van Wright request a special permit under 17417.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace an existing single-family residential structure and replace it with a new single-family residential structure on property located in an R3 zoning district. MAP 119, parcel 31, Mashpee, Mass. With the following conditions. Motion. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mass General Laws 40A, Section 9. Number two, plot plan prepared for PJ Van Wright, Project Two Bayview Road, date August 20th, 2025, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, stamped and signed by Jacob Frick, PLC, number 59305, and Mark Dibb, Civil Engineering, number 45937. Number two, plot plan prepared for PJ Van Wright, Project Two Bayview Road, date August twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, stamped and signed by Jacob Frick, P L C., number five-nine-three-oh-five, and Mark Dibb, Civil Engineer, number four-five-nine-three-seven. Building, uh, number three, building plans. Proposed residence for Van Wright family. Date five-twenty-five, drawing one. Front elevation, right elevation, number two. Rear elevation, left elevation, number three. First floor plan, number four. Second floor plan, prepared by A M. Mushinowitz. Number four, conditioned on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and Conservation Department comments. Number five, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number six, condition that the applicant seek and obtain the planning department review in reference to the tree bylaw, uh, chapter one-seventy-five of the town bylaws prior to the application of a building permit. And number seven, the board finds under one-seventy-four seventeen point one that the proposed project as submitted is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing conditions prior to removal of the existing structure, and that there's adequate land area on a subject lot to provide sufficient parking, and there are no new nonconformities being created.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
No.
So I have four to one. Uh, motion carries. Um, tell Mark thank you very much for his drainage calculations and the fact that he's using Noah.
I saw that.
Yeah, I thought he was being a wise guy there for a second.
Yeah, the difference is, the bylaw said...
Mm-mm.
Say street.
Say street. Okay, what are we doing now?
It may not have been the intent.
That's junk. It goes there. Junk. I'm gonna keep this game.
Do I sign this one?
No.
I don't?
Oh, you do, yeah.
Okay.
Let's see. All right, so the next one, so the last one was what? Mike and George, is that correct? So this one's gonna be, who should it be? I guess it's gonna be, uh, well, we just did Mike and George, so it's gonna be Charlie and George, and then I'll go, all right. So Charlie and George will be the three regular sitting members, and Charlie and George. Charlie, would you like to read one-eighty Waterway?
I will. Here we go. Owners Stephen M. and Jill M. Perper request a written finding under one-seventy-four seventeen and one-seventy-four thirty-three zoning bylaws to allow for removal and replacement of decking, removal and replacement of in-ground pool, and removal of a greenhouse, and replacement with living space to a pre-existing, nonconforming, single-family structure on a property located in an R-three zoning district, map one-one-one, parcel ninety-three, Mashpee, Mass.
So, excuse me one second. Billy's gonna step down. He just realized he may have a conflict. So that being said, it will be Jonathan, myself, and the three associates sitting on this. Why don't I send these two down to the, down to those guys?
Step out.
Thank you. Billy?
Sorry about that.
Not a problem. Counselor?
Good evening again. For the record, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing the applicant. Um, as noted, this is an application under one-seventy-four seventeen and one-seventy-four thirty-three. Uh, the project at one-eighty Waterway is located within the R-three zoning district, within the New Seaberry neighborhood. So as this board knows, in the R-three, we have a forty thousand square foot minimum lot area, hundred-and-fifty-foot frontage, uh, minimum requirement, forty yard, forty-foot front yard setback, fifteen-foot siding rear setbacks, twenty percent lot coverage max, fifty-foot setback to wetland. This particular house, I, I, it's my understanding it's one of the original single families in New Seaberry. This goes back to one of the first. It's apparently been in architectural digests of the sixties and seventies. But that being said, there is nothing that conforms on this lot. The front yard is not conforming, the side yards are not conforming, the rear yard is not conforming, the setback to wetland is not conforming, the lot coverage is not conforming. So, and the lot size is ten thousand eight-hundred-and-seventy-nine square feet for zoning purposes. Uh, it's, there's about six thousand square feet of flood zone. Flood zone bisected about here. So the total lot area is sixteen thousand square, sixteen thousand nine-hundred-and-forty-two, but again, for zoning purposes, is ten thousand eight-hundred-and-seventy-nine square feet. We're within the setback to the wetland, so it's zero. Our side yard setbacks are thirteen point four and eleven point two. The decking with the pool goes right to the property line, so we have, our rear yard setback is zero. Um, our front yard is twenty point six, our frontage is a hundred and ten, and our lot coverage is sixty-five point six percent.
So you're, you're expanding some nonconformities?
No, we're actually not, we're actually reducing the only, so, everything is basically going in the same footprint. We're not changing anything to do with the house. So, the house itself, this box, nothing's changing. There's only interior work, nothing being done to expand it. This greenhouse and decking is, there was a structure here that's being replaced, and we're putting decking here, this rear yard and deck. The pool is being replaced, this is decking, they're replacing it with patio. So there's actually an offset that decreases lot coverage because you're going from decking to patio. So, and we're not changing, this setback remains, these setbacks remain, the setback remains. So, we're actually reducing lot coverage from sixty-five point six percent to sixty-two point three percent.
Sixty-two percent?
Yes. There's about three hundred and forty...
Hmm?
Oh, yeah. There's about three hundred and forty-eight square feet of structure coverage actually being reduced. Uh, we are adding drywells to the project here. Um, it's been approved by Conservation. We're, we're not creating any new nonconformities. We're not changing any existing nonconformities. And again, it's, I would say it's consistent with the neighborhood. I provided pictures. There are plenty of people who have pools and decks and things in their backyards. So, you know, I think, you know, given the fact that we're really just kind of replacing things in kind, making it a little bit better to navigate the backyard, um, the pool exists, we're just replacing it, putting a new one in, putting in patio, removing some decking. There's a pool house, there's nothing changing with that, you know? So I don't, I don't see this as substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. It's basically, you know, what's there.
All right, let me get some letters read in the record, if you would, please, Charlie.
All right. Conservation Board of Health. Conservation for one-eighty Waterways. Resource areas, buffer zone to coastal bank and L S C S F, A E, uh, twelve. N O I application was approved unanimously by the commission due to all work is within pre-existing envelope of disturbance, and landscaping work on site will be a benefit to the resource areas and reduce stormwater runoff into the bay. Conditions are to redirect roof run into drywells, chapter ninety-one compliance with the dock float system, or separate N O I filed for dock float system, and submission of a three-year mitigation and monitoring contract with a certified professional. Board of Health. For one-eighty Waterway. No increase in bedrooms. House to remain three-bedroom. Case opening leading to a new living space.
Okay. Do we have any other letters? Board questions?
I have none.
Anybody in the audience? David?
Um, I'm concerned about the proposed deck. I don't see a setback going on.
The proposed deck?
The proposed deck...
It's zero. It's right on the, it's right on the property line, and it exists.
It's, it's there.
It's there now, yeah. If you look at the photographs that I provided, the deck goes right up to the property line.
See, that was my, that's why I said you were expanding it, 'cause I thought the deck didn't go to the lot line now.
It already, it's already there. If you look, if you look at the...
I think it's all decked.
Yeah, if you look at the photographs in my presentation.
But that's gotta be...
You'll see, it's on a bulkhead, so...
Eight or nine feet.
Yeah, it's a bulkhead, right. Yeah, there's a bulkhead there that goes in, fits down to the float.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the decking goes right up to that bulkhead. And that's not changing.
They rebuilding the deck?
They're rebuilding, yeah, they're replacing, this is already decked now, as you can see. You can see it, goes right up to the, right up to the bulkhead. So they're replacing that, this is all decking here now, they're replacing it with patio.
Okay.
So it's the same height?
Yeah, exactly. As a...
Still pretty high off the ground.
Right, 'cause it's flush with the bulkhead that exists. That bulkhead is a good...
Eight feet?
Eight feet off the float, 'cause you gotta step down to get, even to get to that, so...
Y'all set?
Yeah.
All right, so I'm gonna go back to the board. Any other questions?
No. No, I mean, there's not, not, not a subject system at all? No change to the subject?
Uh, not that I believe.
I didn't see anything on the plan.
Yeah, 'cause they're not adding any living space. They're actually changing any of the living space. It was all outside, outdoor.
Well, though, I did hear the Board Health say that there's a case open required, because I believe you mentioned, Chris, that, um, they're doing some remodeling.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's a lot of interior work being done.
So he's requiring that one of those openings remain a cased opening? All right, just so you understand.
Yeah, there's no, but as I say, nothing, nothing that I'm asking this board to do.
That's on my watch, all right?
Yeah. Nothing to do, it just, he was, yeah, no, nope. All right, so I'm gonna go to the board one more time? All right, so I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Go move.
Second?
I'll second it.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, so let's get a motion, um, in reference to the application, please. Charlie?
Sure. Motion relative to one-eighty Waterway. Owners Stephen M. and Jill M. Perper request a written finding under one-seventy-four seventeen and one-seventy-four thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to allow for removal and replacement of decking, removal and replacement of in-ground pool, and removal of a greenhouse, and replacement with living space in a pre-existing, nonconforming, single-family structure on a property located in an R-three zoning district, map one-one-one, parcel ninety-three, Mashpee, Mass. With the following conditions. One, board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass. General Laws forty A, section six. Number two, site plan prepared for Stephen and Jill Perper, Project One-Eighty Waterway, date August sixth, two thousand twenty-five, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, stamped and signed by Jacob Frick, P L S. Number five-nine-three-oh-five, and Charles Rowland, Civil Engineer, number five-two-six-nine-nine. Number three, building plans prepared for Perper residence, date June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five. One, deck bracket two, deck bracket three, plan four elevation, five closet east side, six closet west side, prepared by Carl Curl Architecture, Melrose, Mass. Number four, condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Conservation Department and Board of Health. Number five, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number six, the board finds that under one-seventy-four seventeen and one-seventy-four thirty-three that the proposed project as submitted is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing, nonconforming structure or use to either the town or the neighborhood.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye. If it's me. It's Chris.
Yeah.
Two, three, four, five, yeah.
Okay.
Come on, Billy. I don't think you can see us. Come on.
He's coming inside.
Coming at you, guys.
Yep.
Here we go. All right, so, sitting on forty-two Secantet will be three regular members and, oh, okay, I forgot my rotation. Help me out here, Charlie.
Charlie, Charlie and Mike.
Charlie and Mike, all right. So sitting on this one will be the three regular and Charlie and Mike, all right? So, Charlie, would you read forty-two Secantet Island in the record, please?
Forty-two Secantet Island Road. Uh, owners Peter B. and Mary Ann S. Frangello request a written finding under one-seventy-four seventeen and one-seventy-four thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a detached garage with an accessory dwelling unit, A D U, above one property located in the R-three zoning district, map one-one-one, parcel thirty, Mashpee, Mass.
He's killing me.
They're providing them.
He's killing me.
Good evening again, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing Peter and Mary Ann Frangello, who are with me, behind me tonight. They are the property owners at forty-two Secantet Island Road. Um, as noted in the here, public hearing notice, this is an application under one-seventy-four seventeen and one-seventy-four thirty-three to, uh, build a new garage with A D U above. So this is located in the R-three zoning district. It's on Secantet Island. It's actually the neighbor, the adjacent to, to Bayview. So, what we have currently on the property is a single-family residence here. We have a shed here and a, a shed here. The shed that's here is a hundred and twenty-five feet, square feet. It's only six feet from the property line, so it's a nonconforming condition. The house itself is, ha, the flood zone bisects the house, so we have a nonconformity as to the setback to wetland. The actual proposed garage A D U is outside of the flood zone, so it's not, um, it's on upland. There is an I A. system being proposed. The front yard setback is nonconforming to the house. However, the side yard to the, the proposed structure is fifteen feet and is well beyond the forty feet required. So it will comply with, the, the structure itself will comply with front yard and side yard setbacks. It will improve the shed nonconformity by removing the shed from going to six point five to nine. So Conservation's approved it. There's mitigation as part of this project. So, other than the rear yard set, the rear yard setback's nonconforming, the setback to wetland's nonconforming, the front yard setback to the house is nonconforming, but again, the, the new structure will comply. And our lot area, due to the flood zone impact, is only six thousand three hundred and seven square feet. The total lot area is fifteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-two square feet. Our lot coverage, due to the flood zone impact, is thirty-four percent existing. As a percentage of the total lot area, it actually conforms at fourteen point six percent. So if you take the sixteen thousand, the fifteen thousand square foot lot, the structure coverage is only fourteen point six percent, which is conforming. That's how we've done it when there's flood zone.
Yeah, you know.
Okay.
It, it's called structure coverage.
Structure coverage, absolutely. So the structure coverage existing is fourteen point six percent?
It looked like, just look at that plan, right? So doesn't it look like a heck of a lot more than fourteen percent of that lot's covered by a structure? Look at it.
Existing?
Existing or, or proposed? Let's say proposed.
Proposed is going up, yes. So you take out the, this...
Yeah.
This house...
Yeah, is what?
Is fourteen point six.
And, 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 okay.
So...
Even that looks more...
Well, the lot, if, if, the lot goes, the lots goes way up here.
Yeah, so the lot goes right there. And you're saying that, yeah, but that's fourteen percent? You, you'd be able to fit like five of the, six of those in there?
Well, he adds fifteen thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty-two square feet for total lot area.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there. It just doesn't, I mean, hey, uh, things have been deceiving before in my life. I'm not, I guess I can't argue with it, with an engineer. I mean, he's...
You're putting that on his plan.
It just doesn't look like fourteen percent. I mean, so that would be six, seven, seven, twenty, twenty...
What's the dark?
That would be seven times. You'd fit that seven times on that lot.
What's the dark green area?
That is, uh, over here?
Yeah.
That's, uh, required mitigation from Conservation. So that's new plantings mitigation.
So you're going from structure coverage of fourteen to what?
Twenty point one percent.
And it's twenty-five in that?
Yeah, 'cause it's a six thousand, with flood zone is six thousand...
Yeah.
Three, six feet. So, it's about an eight hundred and nineteen square foot A D U garage. Um, the height will be, um, twenty-four point three feet, which is well under the thirty-five, uh, max. Again, approved by Conservation, mitigation, there's drywells, there's I A. system, building code compliant. The structure itself is outside the flood zone, not creating any new nonconformities. And again, we've, you know, we just saw an approval of a, a raisin replace. We did a raisin replace recently on Slipper Shell a couple of years ago. Um, so, you know, I don't, I think, I don't see that this is inconsistent with what's going on.
But you are expanding the nonconformities, though?
Correct.
Can you be very clear on then what that expansion is?
It's the lot coverage.
Okay.
Nothing else.
So can we go, and I should, I'm not even following my, my normal. Charlie, can you read into the record, please, the, um, any, um, correspondence?
Uh, yeah, we have, what if, let me do the Board of Health and Conservation first, and there's one...
One letter.
A butter, a letter. Okay, uh, Board of Health, four, forty-two Secantet Island Road. Board of Health, septic design for four-bedroom. Plan shows fourth bedroom in A D U. Conservation, forty-two Secantet Island Road. Uh, resource area, buffer zone to Salt Marsh, buffer zone to Coastal Bank, and L S C S F, A E, uh, twelve, and A E eleven. N O I application was approved with a three-to-one vote by the commission due to upgrading to I A. system, I A. septic system, removal of lawn for mitigation, and drywall installation or roof runoff is an improvement in the resource area.
I gotta put it into a computer. So, any other letters? Mary Ann?
Yes.
There are?
There's one. Forty-two Secantet Island Road, a butter letter, uh, from Lori Sailor Langton, if I'm not saying that properly. This is dated, uh, ten-twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-five. Hi, Mary Ann, thank you for hearing notice. I appreciate it greatly. My pleasure speaking with you last week. Here's my original email that I sent. I received it from the Conservation Committee Office. They informed me that you have made a hearing date scheduled in the near future that I am interested in attending. Property of interest is located at forty-two Secantet Island Road, Frangello Residence, am on immediate butter to the property at six Slipper Shell, Slipper Shell Road, Lori Langton. I have seen, not seen the plans as I have not received the butters notice for the, for the project amidst the initial meeting. Interestingly, this has happened before at another project on Slipper Shell where I was not notified. My concern is that the proposed two-story garage will block the south side of my greenhouse, limits, limits sun exposure. Additionally, I do not have this project, additionally, I do not, I do know that this project was rejected in the past, and wonder, wonder where this changed, laws or otherwise, that has been approved. Please contact me or email me at seven-seven-four-three-one-three-zero-zero-one-one-nine-oh, if you have any questions. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Sincerely, Lori Sailor Langton.
Any others? So she's stating she didn't get notified. She did. We have a return receipt. Well, you don't have to, as long as you know we have.
She already, she notified, that's the...
Yeah, I get it. Um, all right, so board questions? I have a couple. That's okay?
Sure.
So what, just for clarity, 'cause I'm a little messed up here. So what is in the area of the, of the future, uh, building at this point?
There is, there is currently a shed, so if you're...
Which is eleven hundred, which is a hundred and twenty-five square feet?
A hundred and twenty-five square foot shed.
So if you go side yard, what is your closest side yard setback, then?
To the, the proposed structure?
I, yeah, so you, so you meet side yard at fifteen feet.
Fifteen feet, so that was...
So what's rear yard? So you're using that shed as nonconforming?
Correct. At six point five, it's, it's requiring me twenty, fifteen feet off the back.
I got you, so...
Just a hundred and twenty-five square...
So at six point five, and you're nine point zero, so you're improving the situation?
That's correct. The house is nonconforming to the front yard setback, but the structure will be well, well beyond forty feet.
Yeah.
So that's not gonna be an issue. The, the existing house is on the flood zone line, so it's zero. The new structure will be thirty-one feet off the flood zone line, so...
Yeah.
Again, this, your setback is nonconforming. And then again, you have the lot coverage issue because the lot coverage is, the lot is bisected by the flood zone, so you have this inflated lot coverage. But if you, again, if you take the whole lot, you're at twenty point one percent.
Okay. Any other board questions?
And just to address the, I'm sorry to interrupt, just to address the, the butters letter, I sent this to my client. They indicated to me there's never been any other denial or project that's come...
No, no, but it's been covered by Mary Ann, so I'm set with it. I just want to make sure that. All right, anyone in the audience having the same references application? Okay, thank you. David?
Yeah, it's not across the neighborhood, right? So.
No.
No, so I, I think that, um, the lot coverage, the way we normally would calculate it is 20, 20.1%.
Loud 25.
Could be loud 25 because of the deductions.
Yeah.
This is why this whole lot's not there.
Well, I hope we, we have been dealing with it as best we can, so.
Absolutely.
So, you're going from 34 to 46.9, right? Under the, under the, under the bylaw?
Under the waiting place case.
Yeah, but under the structure coverage of this board, you're still below the 25%.
Right. I'm a little worried about the spiral staircase, um, as I don't know if it's going to be a main egress or not. I'm just worried about the egress, but it's not a board.
Right, well, 'cause, right, 'cause originally, the reason they did the spiral staircase was to try to reduce the lot coverage as much as possible. Originally, they had planned like a big landing, which would have really expect exponentially increased lot coverage, so they did that. But again, you know, that may be a building code issue my clients have to deal with.
But, so what concerns me a little bit is, is we're approving a plan that shows a spiral staircase, if in fact it doesn't meet his, his needs, right?
I'll have to come in.
How you doing?
Yeah, I'll have to come in.
You know what I'm saying? All right, so board, have any other questions? I think we've read everything into the record. We've gone to the audience.
I think we've provided you some, uh, stormwater calculations.
Oh, I, again, that's good. See, the only problem is, I, I use a computer, so I don't do them on my head, and so it's, it's great, though. It's good. All right, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I'll make the motion.
Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right. All right, motion, reference the application, please.
Motion relative to 42 Secant Island Road. Owners Peter B. and Mary Ann Esfrangello request a written finding under 17417 and 17433 of zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a detached garage with an accessory dwelling unit, ADU, above one property located in an R3 zoning district, map 119, partial 30, Mashpee, Mass. with the following conditions. Motion. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass. General Laws 40A, Section 6. Two, site plan prepared for Peter and Mary Ann Frangello, Project 42 Secant Island Road, Sheet Number 1 of 1, date August 4, 2025, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, Drawing Title, Site Layout and Septic Design Plan, stamped and signed by Raoul Lazardi Rivera, Civil Engineer Number 46845, and Jacob Frick, PLS Number 59305. Three, stormwater design calculations prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering with a date of, I don't happen to have it handy here.
August 4, 2025.
August 4, 2025. And number four, drawing plans prepared for Frangillo family, date 8/125, P-1, First and Second Floor Plan. Number five, condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Conservation Department and Board of Health. Number six, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number seven, condition that the applicant seek and obtain the planning department in review, uh, reference to, in review, in reference to the tree bylaw, Chapter 175 of the town bylaws prior to the application of a building permit, Number 8. The board finds under 17417 and 17433 that the proposed project, as submitted, is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure or used to either the town or the neighborhood.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Have a great night, everybody.
Good.
There we go.
That's something from the past, the road map.
Nice.
There you go.
Thank you.
I just got to get the document back. Oh, so it'll be, all right, what was the last one? How do you want to go to the next one?
Mike and I.
Okay. So, this one will be Mike and.
George.
Okay. So, this one is Mike and you? Or do you want to go to both of them?
Mike and George.
Okay. Mike and George for this one, how's that? So, it'll be the three regular members plus Mike and George.
There you go.
So, Charlie, am I wearing you out, or can you read Triton Way in?
No, I can go.
There you go, go for it.
Yeah. It's like pitching extra innings.
Yeah, listen, I'm, I'm liking it.
There you go.
I just don't want to abuse you, you know what I'm saying?
Now, I've been a lawyer all my life. I've, I've already gone through that.
Good. Vouch for that. So, be my guest. Read Triton Way into the record, please.
Okay. Oops. There we go, got it. 34 Triton Way. Owner 11771 Cala Lily LLC request a written finding under 17417 and 17433 of the zoning bylaws to raise a single-family dwelling and replace it with a new single-family dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district. Property is located within the 1964 New Seabury Special Permit, map 127, partial 81, Mashpee, Mass.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Brian Wall, an attorney with an office in Sandwich, representing the petitioner in this matter, who is the owner of the property. As the hearing notice said, the application before you is to raise, as in R-A-Z-E, the existing single-family dwelling on the property and replace it with a new dwelling. The property is in the New Seabury Special Permit area and therefore is largely governed by that permit, but after consulting with Mr. Morris and confirming, it does need a finding under 174-17 of your bylaw because it's within 50 feet of the wetland, which is in this case a coastal bank. And the wetland setback in your bylaw was adopted after the New Seabury Special Permit was issued in 1964. So, therefore, we need a finding as to that particular element of your bylaw. So, just, I'd like to review the existing conditions shown on the plan to my right. The property is 21,950 square feet in size. It has 125 feet of frontage. It's currently improved by a single-family dwelling, which is a three-bedroom, and it's served by a non-conforming cesspool. The dwelling was constructed in 1967, and it is in a state of pretty bad disrepair for some reason. And if you look at the property, it also backs up to or fronts upon, however you want to look at it, Vineyard Sound or Nantucket Sound. And as you can see on the plan, there's a pretty large rock revetment down at the bottom of the coastal bank, and that is also in a state of disrepair and is eroding. And if I could show you the contours on the plan, if you look here, the blue line is the top of the coastal bank. But these contours that are beyond the blue line show that the bank is eroding, and it's causing quite a bit of concern to the neighbors because if the revetment collapses, it will be terrifically bad for this property as well as for the neighbors. So, we did go to conservation, and Conservation also expressed those concerns and did approve the project, which is, in their case, not only the raise and replace of the building, but also there's an order of conditions to repair the revetment and restore the coastal bank back to the blue line shown on the plan, and then it's going to be planted with plants. And in order to do that, the house actually has to be torn down, at least partially, hopefully fully. And so, this is all kind of a combined project to take care of the problem with the house by replacing it and also taking care of the problem with the revetment. So, the course of construction would be to raise the house, bring the equipment in needed to fix the revetment and the bank, and then back it out and then build the house and back out. As I said, it has been approved by Conservation, and they're urging that the project proceed as soon as possible. The proposal is to build a, a new house essentially in the footprint of the existing house. If you look at the plan, you can see the existing house is shown in a dash black line, and the new house is situated over it. It is a larger house, but this is in the special permit area, and so essentially, approval of the project is primarily in the hands of the New Seabury Architectural Review Board. But the new house will not increase bedrooms. It will be three bedrooms as the existing house is now. It will add a two-car garage. It will add a pool, but it will also replace the existing cesspool with a denitrifying septic system. Pertinent to, I think, the hearing tonight is that the existing dwelling is currently 24.3 feet at its closest point to the top of the bank, and the proposed house will be exactly the same, 24.3 feet. So, insofar as the zoning analysis is concerned, because we're in the special permit area, front, rear, and side yard setbacks and lot coverage are not applicable, they're covered by the special permit. The relief needed is a finding under 174-17 as to the setback to wetlands, and the test is whether or not the proposal is substantially more detrimental than the existing structure. And as I indicated a minute ago, the existing setback to wetlands is 24.3, and the proposed is 24.3. So, we're keeping it exactly the same, and so therefore, I would submit to you that it's not substantially more detrimental than what currently exists. And although I don't think we need to show this, the proposed project has many, many benefits, including what I've already mentioned, the repair of the revetment, a denitrifying septic system. There's also a very substantial mitigation plan, which I'd like to show you. In order to meet the wetlands regulations, there's very substantial mitigation requirements these days, and this proposal includes 5,620 square feet of mitigation, which is native plantings, it's a mixture of trees, shrubs, and lower ground cover. There's also a two-car garage proposed, which will provide parking, and there'll be additional parking in the driveway. So, again, if you focus on what's really at hand here is whether it's substantially more detrimental insofar as the setback to wetlands is concerned, we're keeping it exactly the same. So, I would submit that it's eligible for a permit or finding.
You also need, you said you needed just a written finding, but you also need a special permit under raise and replace, right?
No, I don't think so because we're in the special permit area.
You concur with that, David?
Yes.
So, he does not need.
The only, the only non, it's a conforming house, believe it or not, because there are no setbacks.
Right.
So, everything's conforming.
So, he does not need a special permit for raise and replace?
I don't believe so, no.
I have a question.
The other, the, because, um, I think he needs a finding because it's, it's within the 30, setback to wetlands, within the 50 feet.
Correct.
Does that make this building non-conforming? That's, I guess that's the question.
So, the question I have is regarding whether or not it's more detrimental to the neighborhood, or is it just detrimental to going closer to the ocean?
Well.
Can?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's.
Is it more detrimental?
It's not going closer to the ocean, but what's there is detrimental to the neighborhood. This is Triton Way, it's one of the.
I know exactly where it is.
And this house is, is a mess.
Absolutely, but the question is, is the new structure more detrimental to the neighborhood because of the increase in size?
I don't, yeah, I mean.
Can that be brought into this conversation?
Yeah, that's, that's up to the board.
Or is it just, quote, "only looking at more detrimental to going to the ocean"? Do I have to define my view as more detrimental only to going to the ocean?
Yeah, but they're showing that they're fixing, they're fixing that approach, and, you know, it's.
Well, I understand that, but in my view, they could fix the whole thing with a smaller house.
Well, if I could, if I may, can I just get some document, whatever we have, read into the record, and then we'll, we'll.
Easy one first. Board of Health.
Okay.
34 Triton Way. Septic design for four-bedroom. Four plans show four bedrooms. Basement not fit for human habitation and cannot be used as a bedroom. Conservation, 34 Triton Way. Resource areas, buffer zone to coastal bank. NOI application was approved with a three-to-one vote from the commission due to currently existing unstable conditions of the coastal bank, and the overall reconstruction of the entire property will benefit all resource areas. Concerns over setback of the pool from the top of bank and compelling need for a larger dwelling in the buffer zone were points of discussion. Conditions of approval are submission of a more detailed mitigation planting plan. Installation of hay bales extending to the road. Three-year mitigation monitoring contract with a qualified professional, and pool must achieve a 25-foot setback from top of bank.
All right, so board questions?
Well, my question's the same. I'm not really a pro, matter of fact, I'm for replacing what's there. I'm not really in favor of replacing it with something that is, what, twice the size? Up to 25%? Lot coverage? So, that's, that's where, that's what I'm thinking here, and do I have to limit my thinking only to the setback from the ocean regarding more detrimental? Can I, can I kind of jump in on that, too? In, in the Conservation Commission response, and I don't know whether this makes sense or not, it said, "Concerns over setback of the pool from the top of bank and compelling need for a larger dwelling in the buffer zone were points of discussion." Am I correct that a somewhat larger dwelling may make that area more stable than if a smaller dwelling were put there? Is that what they're saying?
I, I don't think that's what they were saying.
Okay.
Yeah, there were, there were two issues. The, I'm sorry. When, when the Conservation Commission looks at this, every wetland resource has certain functions and performance standards that are applicable. And so, what a, what a bank does is, I, I tell my clients, it's kind of like the wall of the bathtub, so when the hurricane comes and there's the storm surge, the bank keeps the water where it's supposed to be. This is a very high bank. The elevation of the house is about 40, 45 feet. So, what the commission is primarily concerned with is stability of the bank. And so, when they saw the pool there, they were concerned about the depth of the pool and excavation because they don't want the bank to fall, to come up this way and then fall back further. And so, what they did was they attached a condition that said that when the bank restoration is done, the pool must be a minimum of 25 feet back from the bank. And so, that's a condition of the wetlands permit. The issue of the compelling need, there was a waiver required under the, the local regulations, and that's one of the standards that they look at, is the compelling need to have what was being proposed. But the commission did approve this. I think they were.
Is that what they're saying?
I, I don't think that's what they were saying.
Okay, well, I.
Yeah, there were, there were two issues that, um, sorry. When, when the Conservation Commission looks at this, every wetland resource has certain functions in performance standards that are applicable. And so what a, what a bank does is, I, I tell my clients, it's kind of like the wall of the bathtub. So when the hurricane comes and there's the storm surge, the bank keeps the water where it's supposed to be. This is a very high bank. The elevation of the house is about forty, forty-five feet. Um, so what the commission is primarily concerned with is stability of the bank. And so when they saw the pool there, they were concerned about the depth of the pool and excavation because they don't want the bank to fall, to come up this way and then fall back further. And so what they did was they attached a condition that said that when the bank restoration is done, the pool must be a minimum of 25 feet back from the bank. And so that's a condition of the wetlands permit.
Okay.
The issue of the compelling need, there was a waiver required, um, under the, the local regulations. And that's one of the standards that they look at is the compelling need to have what was being proposed. But the commission did approve this. Um, I think they were, I can't say exactly what persuaded them, but they were interested in seeing the revetment and the bank restored. And they were very happy with the planting plan. The client actually hired a very esteemed firm to develop that planting plan that I showed you and it's going to be substantially approved.
Who was that firm?
Um, let's look at the plan. It's off date somewhere.
Bonding Company?
Mark Mazarelli Associates.
Is it Marzulli?
Marzulli Associates. They conquered, uh, they conquered at Cambridge, Mass. He was at the hearing and spoke about it. If I could maybe talk about what Mr. Ferbusch said? Kind of have two responses. So the house is definitely bigger, but if it, if the regular requirements were applicable, uh, it does meet side yard setbacks if they were applicable. It's currently non-conforming to the front. It's increasing that non-conformity if there was such a non-conformity because mainly of the garage that's coming closer to the house. It would comply with lot coverage, substantially complying. The, uh, the existing lot coverage is 7.5. It is increasing substantially, but it's 17.2 when we're done. It would be 20% in the R3 district. So we, we would meet all those requirements. But when you do look at your bylaw, it says that when there's a written finding, the Board of Appeals must find that such change or extension or alteration, and that's in reference to the non-conformity. So you know it better than I do because I don't sit on a board and you do. Whenever you're presented with a pre-existing non-conforming structure, you identify all the non-conformities and then you look at whether they're decreasing or increasing, you know, on each, each specific one. The only non-conformity here is the setback to wetlands at 24.3 where it's supposed to be 50. And we maintain that exact setback.
All because you're in the special permit zone, though.
All because we're in the special permit.
Exactly.
Which, you know, the size of the house, the setbacks of maybe.
Side yard, front yards, the whole thing is basically.
It's not in our, uh, this board's jurisdiction.
Right.
It will change next year.
O- o- over the past years, um, different arguments have been made about more detrimental to the neighborhood regarding the size, et cetera.
Right.
Too close, too big.
Right.
Et cetera. Uh, there was one eighteen months ago, two years ago, down in Pompanasset Island.
A waiting place?
Pompanasset Island.
No, no, don't go there.
No.
I'm familiar, Mr. Ferbusch.
So you know what I'm talking about.
I do.
That was a, yeah.
So I think the question is, is can this, so is it more det, so you're saying that we need to find that it's not more detrimental in reference to the setback to the wetlands, period?
That's what I believe that you should be looking at.
Right.
But I did have a second argument that assuming that you took a broader viewpoint, I think that even though the house is getting bigger, it's very much in keeping with the other large houses in that particular part of the neighborhood. And as Mr. Morris said, there are substantial, uh, benefits here. There's a cesspool that's going to be denitrifying, the repair of the bank, the house is about to fall down. The, I think it's overall, I think you could make that finding even if you looked at it on a much broader, broader basis.
Well, why don't I go out to the, anyone in the audience having to say about this application?
Maybe the young lady from the newspaper has something to say.
David, what are your thoughts?
I, I, I agree with, um, what attorney, uh, what the attorney said, that we're only concerned with the setback to wetlands is it, and it's not really to the neighborhood. It's a, it's to the, to that setback and it's remaining the same. So, um, conservation approved it, um, and it's really, we don't want to step, overstep our bounds on this.
Yeah, conservation doesn't care about the scent lot coverage. They don't even think about it. It's not part of their purview.
But we don't have, but, um, because of the special permit, we can't look at lot coverage either. We don't have that right either. We don't have side yard, we don't have front yard, we don't have lot size, none of that.
So my view of this is totally limited, is what you're saying.
Right. Only to a written finding, which is just setback to wet.
It's tough to get your head around.
And he, and here's the.
I don't know, I. That's what it is.
The problem I have with the application is.
All these set, all the other setbacks are conforming.
The problem I have is, is the applicant has obtained an approval from conservation and frankly, the situation is getting better because the bank is blown out.
Right. Mm-hmm.
I, I don't know if we, it's awful hard to find that it's more detrimental to the neighborhood when they're improving a bank that's, that the neighborhood is probably looking at saying, oh, my God. And if that's our only right is to look at whether it's more detrimental under the setback to the wetlands, I don't know how we find that it is more detrimental from, from one person.
Yeah, well, I totally agree that it's going to improve the situation.
Yep.
That was not where I was going with this at all.
I, you're looking to see whether there was something that could improve it more than doing it this way. Am I correct?
Yeah, I just think the house is too big for the lot. That's all. Is it going to improve it? It's going to improve the problem.
Yeah, I.
I agree with that.
If they were covered by R3, they would be allowed 20% lot coverage, correct?
Seventeen point nine if you were to look at it.
Seventeen point nine.
Right.
Do you have any idea what the other homes in the area have, the lot coverages?
I, I didn't do that analysis.
I know they're huge homes, but.
Right, I do, I do have an aerial photo. I would be happy to show.
I'm sure it's, I'm sure it's right in line with.
But again, the only thing we can look at is the setback to wetlands, whether it's more detrimental or not. The, the house could be six times the size.
Yeah.
Side yard setback, lot coverage is, we have no authority on that whatsoever.
And I just would take issue with the way that the board is saying that. You do have authority, but you gave, you, not you particular people here tonight, but the, this board gave.
Gave it to New Seabury years ago.
Exactly.
We, we, but we have no more input on that. Whatever that special permit says, that's the law.
Right.
And I don't believe the special permit has anything to do with lot coverage, side yard setback or anything else.
Exactly. And, and in all honesty.
I agree, but it's in front of us.
Yeah, no, I get it, I get it. I just don't want.
Part of, part of our problem is those of us who have lived here for a while, and I started off in, in, in Marshop Village, uh, and I remember the days that we could walk from Marshop all the way down past the golf course without walking in water. We were walking on beach. And I know in the time that I've been here, what's happened is that wall that we thought was impenetrable is not impenetrable. The sea moves.
The sand.
And it's going to continue to move. So all we can do is the best that we can.
Right, just keep fixing.
Yeah.
All right, so I think I've gone through the checkmarks here. Um, I would like, I'd like to close a public hearing unless someone has something against that.
No, I don't.
Any other questions of the applicant?
I'll make the motion to close.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Uh, let's move forward with, uh, you know, in reference to, um, a motion for the application.
Make a motion relative to thirty-four Triton Way. Owner, 11771 Cala Lily LLC, request a written finding under 17417 and 17433 of the zoning bylaws to raise a single-family dwelling and replace it with a new single-family dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district. Property is located within the 1964 New Seabury Special Permit, excuse me, MAP 127, parcel number 81. Mashpee, Mass. with the following conditions. Motion, number one. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass. General Laws 40A, Section 6. Number two, plot plan, prepared for thirty-four Triton Way, date September 3, 2025. Site and septic upgrade, Duckham Architecture and Interiors, date 6/27/25, A100. Proposed basement plan, A101. Proposed first floor plan, A102. Proposed second floor plan, A103. Cell story level plan, A2000, A200, rather. Proposed elevations, A201, proposed elevations. Number four, condition and all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Conservation Department and Board of Health, recommendations and requirements. Number five, condition that the applicant seek and obtain the planning department review in reference to the tree bylaw, Chapter 175 of the town bylaws prior to the application of a building permit. Number six, the board finds under 17417 and 17433 that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure or use to either the town or the neighborhood.
So we'll do a roll call vote. How's that? So who was sitting on this? I'm sorry. All right, so Mike, you in favor against this applicant? You're okay? You in favor?
Yes.
Billy?
Yes.
Rowan's, yes?
Yes.
There you go.
Very much.
You are welcome.
I'll have to sign off first, I'm going to figure out.
Sure. Yeah, no problem.
Enjoy, thank you for coming.
A pleasure.
Okay.
I will, no problem.
Yeah. Here we go.
What did you get a, uh, just don't want to plane on this one?
On last two I did. He's, he's, uh, playing me a little bit here. I can't look at him before.
Got you on your toes?
Yeah. I'll be doing calculations.
Billy, here you go. You got it.
Junk.
What do you do with all this paper, Mary?
Past Jonathan's bedtime.
Yours too.
I know, that's for sure. Long time ago.
All right, so here we are.
Good work.
Best but not least.
So if you could give your name and your involvement in the project, please.
Uh, good evening, Zach Posinski, professional engineer, Bracken Engineering.
Great.
So here this evening on behalf of the applicant, 61 Riverside Drive.
Jesus Christ, you're right, my mistake. Would you, uh, who, so who's up next? It's getting late.
It's okay.
It's passed my bedtime like an hour. Who's on this one then? It'd be probably, so, all right.
All that's left.
The one people left.
Oh, that's right, he left. Ah, that's right.
So it's us.
All right, so it'll be the people sitting, which is three regular members and two associates. Uh, Charlie, would you read in the record, uh, 61 Riverside, please? Something else without.
Okay, uh, 61 Riverside Road. Petitioner Christina Stankovich requests a written finding under 17417, 17433, and 17431. Footnote six of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a detached accessory dwelling unit, ADU, on property located in an R3 zoning district. MAP 119, parcel 69, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record, Richard E. Halpern, trustee of the Genia Realty Trust.
So let's try that again, sir.
Good evening, for the record, Zach Posinski, professional engineer, Bracken Engineering. I'm here this evening on behalf of the applicant, Christina Stankovich. As mentioned, property site 61 Riverside, existing single-family, uh, property down in the Snug Harbor area in an R3 zoning district. Currently, it's not complying on lot area, front yard setback, side yard setback, and the wetland setback. So the existing lot area, um, total lot area of the property is 7,493 square feet with a total upland area of 6,892 square feet. Uh, so we're looking to construct a two-bedroom accessory dwelling unit on the property. Uh, the new property, uh, project would result in upgrading the onsite septic system with a new denitrification septic system, asking for a 3.9-foot setback to the, um, abutting coastal, the land subject to coastal storm flowage. Uh, the house has actually been designed with a open foundation system to be built on helical piles. So even though it's outside of the flood zone, we're building a coastal resilient structure here, asking approval to build it. Uh, we're not increasing any non-conformities on the lot. Currently, the existing side yard setback on the rear, the backside of the house are planned south to the accessway is 2.3 feet, or 2.1 feet to that access. The actual structure is five feet to the property line. Uh, the new structure that we're looking to build is just over nine feet to the backside of the property. Uh, if we take the two structures to the, uh, west and east of us, the average setback is 10.3 feet. And we are proposing a setback to the front steps of 12 point, 14.5 to the front porch and 12 point. Hold on. 12.9 to the front steps. So we're not increasing any of the non-conformities to the front yard setback. Um, we initially had filed, um, a variance request on this, but after speaking with Mr. Morris, it was, uh, that was pulled back and we modified our application to the written finding request on this. Uh, we believe that the project is in harmony with the neighborhood. Um, the abutting property of 55 is a bunch of small cottages. Uh, this is smaller than most of those cottages, as you can see in the area next to us. Uh, does provide additional, uh, year-round housing for the area. All utilities are onsite. Uh, the lot has been redesigned so they'll provide, um, a curb cut off of the private drive of Snub Harbor Circle and four onsite, um, parking spaces, so two for each unit. Uh, there were comments received from Board of Health, no issues on the septic, it's complying, and the project's outside jurisdiction for, um, conservation. So with that, we believe we've met all the performance standards to be no more detrimental.
Yes.
And I'll turn it back to the questions.
One second. So Charlie, will you read anything into the record?
We have, uh, conservation and Board of Health. Uh, conservation for 61 Riverside Road, not within wetlands jurisdiction. And Board of Health, or, uh, I'm sorry.
I have it here.
Uh, for Riverside Road, um, is septic design for four bedrooms. Floor plan shows two bedrooms. This will be added to the already existing two-bedroom, another unit, four-bedroom total. All in order.
Any other respondents? Do you have that letter from their butter?
I don't have it, uh.
Could you pass it down to us, please?
I don't think, well, I probably have it, but I don't have it at hand.
Oh, we've got it, we've got it, David, thanks. Ooh, ooh, ooh. Good practice, Charlie, as if you need it.
Okay. I can handle it.
Be my guest.
All right, we have a letter, uh, uh, from Linda Thorp, dated Tuesday, 10/28/25, to Mary Ann Romero. It starts off, "Thank you for clarifying my question. I have questions and comments to be brought forth at the public hearing on November 12, 2025, regarding the ZBA application for 61 Riverside Road, Mashpee." Comments. Presently, there are ten or more dwelling units, rental properties, at 61 Riverside Road, also known as Snug Harbor. I could see many from my house. There was major construction happening at the property for almost a year, which was for property improvements, including some interior upgrades, a new septic system, I think, and a road as an egress and ingress to the existing dwellings from Riverside Road. During construction, especially of her road and septic system, there were many times that Riverside Road itself was blocked, literally impassable, by construction vehicles, causing stress for our end of the neighborhood, about seven residential homes. It was often made to wait 10 minutes or more for the truckers to move the vehicles. Most of us need to get to work on time. Sometimes I had to leave my vehicle down the street and walk home. One time I had to enter the property to find a worker and let him know I needed to get by. He did not move very quickly. The exterior of the buildings were painted, which was an improvement, but at the front of her property, on the main road of Riverside. but at the front of her property, on the main road of Riverside, across from my house, there is a dilapidated fence. Half laying on the ground, behind the broken post and beam fence is a boat of questionable use, which I'm sure will sit there all winter. There is an area on the corner with other boats, equipment, and other questionable items. There is also an outbuilding with washer and dryers in it for tenants' use. Where does that wastewater go? Questions? Why does she need another dwelling on the property? How will the septic be handled? The property is on the water. I know the town and citizens are very concerned with our environmental impact. How is the new dwelling going to help any of that? The owner lives in one of the dwellings, but the rest are rentals. From what I understand, from one of the tenants, it is not affordable housing, as the rents are upwards of $2,500 a month. Will the new dwelling be another rental property? Will any of the existing buildings be rented? I think this is part of her stuff. "I received an abutter's notice regarding hearing on Wednesday, November 12. How was the determination made? Is it based on abutter's requests, comments, or facts? Are we allowed to make statements in advance? Could you please explain the process?" "I know an unsightly property and lack of concern for neighbors doesn't impact any town regulations or bylaws, but my point being there is no reason for another property to be built in Snug Harbor. I know she has ties to some of the previous town officials, so I prefer to stay anonymous as much as possible as fear of retaliation of some sort." In deference to her, I will read her name. And I believe that's the extent of the abutter's comments.
Okay, do we have any other letters? Board questions? I have one. Does state law trump, meaning the ADU law, or does local jurisdiction, local bylaw trump?
It's kind of both, but this is, you know, there's a lot of inaccuracies on that letter. This is, this is a property on its own. It's not, it's separate from the other projects with, the other houses, where there are 13. So this property does, I'm very familiar with this project, and this property is allowed to have an ADU through the Affordable Housing Act and by bylaws. I love that it's on helical piles.
So I'm trying to understand that. I thought the Affordable Housing Act was 50% of the existing house size and/or up to a maximum 900.
20 square feet.
So the existing house is only 691.
According to this.
So if it's 691, they could have only like, like...
348?
Yeah.
345?
I think that we have a bylaw in place with the maximum, it can't be below 400.
Yeah.
I'll read it to you.
Yeah, so I'm trying to understand who's trumping. Yeah, good luck to you.
"The gross area of the accessory apartment shall not be less than 350 square feet and shall not exceed 900 square feet."
Then you got the state law that says 50% of the existing structure, which this isn't, but would local trump? Would our local bylaw?
I think at this time, but I, you know, no, I guess if some...
I mean, I leave that up to you.
You go by, you go by both. I mean, but again, the state law basically wants to make these things more permissible. That's the goal. And it's tough for me to take, but that's the way it is.
So if this board would make a decision that we approve this application, you're okay with the size?
I am.
All right. He's the boss. I don't even work yet. I certainly don't get paid. All right, board questions?
Dave, who ultimately signs off relative to whether it's state or local? You?
I, I sign off for the CO.
He's the boss.
Okay.
He makes that decision.
That's all I wonder.
As a zoning enforcement officer, if he says this is adequate size and it meets the state, whatever criteria he wants to put it under, then it's admitted?
Honestly, I don't want to see three, I don't like 350, I don't like anything under 400. So I'm trying to still, you know, impose that.
Yeah.
Let's see.
I'm good.
Okay.
It's going to have a max, a minimum of what?
400, I think it is.
Two bedrooms? Excuse me. Provided requirement, section B are met, and there shall be a maximum of two bedrooms.
I didn't realize that it was, the main house was only 600 square feet.
690.
I thought it was more, I thought it was 800.
But it, the other, it's your fault.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean...
These things are tough.
I get it, 100%. I mean, you got state statutes, you got local statutes, no one, no one wants to say from the state who has, you know, who's... Good luck to you.
Makes it happen for the consultants.
All right, so let me just go out to the audience while we're pondering. Anyone in the audience like to speak? Okay. David, your thoughts?
I gave them to you.
Okay. Board?
No questions.
My attitude is, you've heard from the zoning enforcement officer, and it's not my thing to question.
Everything else is okay.
All right, so can I get a, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All's in favor? Can I have a motion in reference to the application? It is, again, just a written finding, right? But just so everyone understands. Motion in reference to the application, please.
Okay, motion relative to 61 Riverside Road. Petitioner Christina Stankovich requests a written finding under 17417 and 17433 and 17431. Footnote six of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a detached accessory dwelling unit, ADU, on property located in an R3 zoning district. Map 119, parcel 69, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record, Richard E. Halpern, trustee of the Genia Realty Trust with the following conditions. Motion, number one. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass. General Laws 40A, section six. Two, proposed subsurface sewage disposal plan. Prepared for Genia Realty Trust, 61, excuse me, Riverside Road, date August 20, 2025, revised 9/24/25 to show distance to wetlands, LSCSF. Prepared by Bracken Engineering, Inc. Stamped and signed by Alan Grady, PLS number 37732, and Zachary Buzinski, civil engineer, number 47797. Three, drawing plans. New ADU at 61 Riverside Road, date 4/22/25. T1 title sheet. A1 floor plan, window and door schedules slash elevation. A2 peer plan details, floor framing plan, nailing schedule. A3 roof framing plan, building sections details. Prepared by WB Daniels Design, South Yarmouth, Mass. Number four, condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Conservation Department and Board of Health. Number five, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number six, condition that the applicant seek and obtain Planning Department review in reference to the tree bylaw, chapter 175 of the town bylaws prior to the application of a building permit. And number seven, the board finds under 17417, 17433, and 17431. Footnote six, that the proposed project is submitted is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing nonconforming structure or use to either the town or the neighborhood.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
There you go. Do you have to get back to Nantucket tonight?
Not tonight.
There you go. Nice. It's not as firm as...
Well, it's good you can drive to Plymouth.
I'm sorry. You too.
There we go.
Sign away.
Well, that HVA system is a little loud, isn't it?
Yeah.
Never noticed that before.
Covered a lot of stuff tonight, Ron.
Yeah, I know.
Just yet.
Questions?
We certainly did.
Do you go back?
Yep, yep. They all died.
What's next? Approval of minutes, October 8, 2025, and October 15, 2025. I will be honest with you, I did not read them.
I did.
I did.
So can I get a motion to...
I'll make a motion, we approve both of them.
So do we have a second?
I have a second.
All's in favor? I will abstain. There you go, not that I'm against it, I just didn't read them.
Four in favor, one abstention.
Perfect.
And you went in here for one of them.
There you go, that's right, see that? Do I have a motion to...
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
Do I have a second?